Everyone, welcome. We have lots of people joining us in the audience tonight for those who can't see them on television. And it is Thursday, February 28th, and this is the Brookline School Committee. And we will start with our calendar, which is up on the screens and shows lots of school committee subcommittee meetings. In March, we have both a school committee meeting on the 14th, and then we actually have a workshop just a few days later on the 19th. And there are building committee meetings and site council meetings for curriculum, and there are celebrations for the teen center. There is the BEF events, both the Adult Trivia Bee, which I learned yesterday that it's going to be at Coolidge Corner School, which is a bigger venue with bigger tables. And so, there can be a lot more adult spellers for that fundraiser. And there's also the fifth grade spelling bee, which has a new chief judge this year because the superintendent has recused himself because he has a fifth grade student who may be competing. And anyway, there are a bunch of other celebrations and galas, step to success, that are all worthy, worthy events on our spring calendar coming up. Anything else on the calendar? On our consent agenda, we have the minutes from February 14th, and I would entertain a motion on the minutes. Ms. Scott, over a second, please. Yes, Mr. Pearlman, thank you so much. On the consent agenda, which is just the pass record from February 14th. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And we are on to public comment. Ms. Coyne. We could get started. If anyone knows who was the first person to sign up on the list, yeah, please join us. Come to the microphone, tell us who you are. And I don't know how long the list is. If there are a lot of people, it would be helpful if you try to keep to three minutes. Okay, great.
Thank you for your time and attention. My name is Jesse Curtaham. I'm a teacher at Driscoll. And this is my seventh year here in Brookline. I'm standing this evening to speak on behalf of Brookline educators and our students, and in solidarity with educators who have struck for better schools in Arizona, and Colorado, in LA, North Carolina, in Oklahoma, and in West Virginia. And I believe that Brookline can and absolutely ought to do better than those districts. Better than it did in previous contract negotiations, frankly. I've not been looking forward to negotiating a new contract. The previous negotiations took entirely too long for the school committee to agree to reasonable and necessary changes. This process exhausts Brookline educators, who would certainly rather use their time and energy to take care of our families, and ourselves, our cats, and of course, to do our best work for our students. It was very frustrating to arrive on Monday evening, ready to negotiate, and to be denied that opportunity. Reassurances that the school committee members respect our work and appreciate our commitment to participate in our union don't really amount to much when we are then denied the chance to even discuss our schools' needs. I hope the school committee will understand the benefit of showing true respect to our towns educators, and to agree to come to the table with our negotiation team. Thank you.
Thank you. John Schacter.
Hi, and thanks for the chance to comment. I'm John Schacter. I have two kids at Driscoll. I'm here as an advocate for a real opportunity for our school to take advantage of a chance to improve our action on climate change. And that's around the food service contract that the committee is working on. Most think of transportation as a huge source of carbon emissions, and that is true. Lots of people don't know how much food waste contributes to the global carbon load. And conversely, what a wonderful opportunity we have to improve our performance by addressing food waste. Food waste in landfills gives off methane, which is 86 times worse than carbon dioxide over its first 20 years in the atmosphere. Adopting a plant-rich diet is another huge opportunity because of the emissions associated with a meat-rich diet. Composting food waste we produce keeps methane out of the atmosphere. When we choose our next food supplier, we need to choose one committed to reducing food waste on both sides of the lunch line. In the purchase and preparation of food, in preparation of food for sale, composting food scraps, and in food recovery programs that give untouched food to the hungry. There are some regulations that can inhibit this food recovery, but other towns in our region have somehow gotten around that, and we can too. I know the DPW is working with the district to bring composting to schools this fall, and that there are pilot programs at some schools, but these efforts will be more successful and cost-effective if we introduce pilot programs to all this school, all the schools this spring, so that older kids can teach younger kids how to compost next fall. Climate change is scary, but we have lots of opportunities to take action. Let's show our kids we're doing everything we can to stop it, and give them some agency too. We all need to be activists now. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Martha B. Binger.
Hi, everyone. So nice to meet you. I've had three kids go through the Brookline schools, and I'm grateful for all of your service. I'm here tonight because I'm the mother of a senior named Jacob Marks, who's in the ACE program at Brookline High School. And there's a plan to reduce the counseling position there from full-time to part-time, which I think is financially unwise. It's a decision that Headmaster Meyer has made, I think in conjunction with Superintendent Bosch, who's very graciously agreed to meet with us tomorrow and hear the concerns of some more of us who are here today. I want to explain to you why it's financially unwise. My son was going down a very difficult path. About two years ago, we contacted an advocate who helped us with testing and with revisions on his IEP. But we were pretty convinced that we needed an out-of-district placement, and that we had a very good case. And then Jacob found ACE, and it pretty much turned his life around, with a lot, a lot of help from Cara Lopez, the guidance counselor. I tried to tally the number of calls and emails I've had with her. Since the start of the year, it's at least 25. There's another one today. ACE draws in kids who need lots and lots of help. And this is not to say that other kids in Brookline don't need help, that we don't need to boost guidance across the board. I've made some inquiries. Health insurance will fund appointments at the high school. I'm happy to help facilitate that process in any way I can. The State's Health Policy Commission is funding a pilot program in Gardner districts to boost guidance, which I think is very promising, and maybe a model Brookline could work on. The Buchausk Blue Shield Foundation is committed to increasing mental health services and has some grant money. There are lots of ways that we can boost guidance counseling without amputating a program that in my mind is wildly successful. So, I want to thank you again. I'm hoping that you will, in whatever conversation the way you can, try to be sure that we take a program that is working so well and expand it, not shrink it, so that it can no longer work effectively. My kid is a senior. He will not be affected by this change, but I can't really abide the idea that other kids won't have the same opportunity that he did. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Snyder.
Hi, everybody. I know many of you, so thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Rebecca, and I am a guidance counselor at Runcle School. And I am a parent of three children in Brookline. I'm a voter. And I have a son who's been in the ACE program as well. And I really appreciate everything Martha had to say. I don't need to repeat it. It's my experience with ACE has been different. And I want to say that as a guidance counselor, I'm seeing more and more students with vulnerabilities. And so, I wish we had an ACE program in the middle schools, and we don't. So, I, and I understand that there's certainly an issue with the budget and with funding. And I'm finding that I have the inside scoop, and I know that there are positions, that are guidance positions, that are moving and changing, and they're trying to add, but it's almost borrowing from Peter to save Paul. And at the same time, I see a tremendous increase in administrators and deans at the high school with not the same increase in counseling. So, I just want to say that obviously, for my own work reasons, I would love increase in guidance, but I think taking guidance away from students who are most vulnerable, some of them are here today, to support the maintenance of a full-time position, I just think is a wrong choice. And the last thing that I will say is that the guidance position in ACE is not like any other guidance position. They are, it's not anything like the guidance counselors at the high, at the general guidance counselors at the high school. It is not like the guidance counselors in the elementary schools, just a little bit, because she deals with only vulnerable children. And I know, as a guidance counselor, if I have one or two vulnerable kids who really need a ton of attention, they can take up all of my time. And so, imagine having 50. It's not right to give these kids less support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Collins.
Hi, I'm Ann Collins. I'm a librarian at the high school. I love my job. It's the best job ever. I'm here to urge you to allow silent representatives of the BU at open bargaining sessions. I believe it will promote civility on all sides. It'll avoid misunderstandings between school committee members and BU members. After settling our last contract, I wonder how long it took for the animosity to dissipate, and how that affected teachers and you. Please let us work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Block.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeremy Block. I'm a resident in Brookline, and also a teacher at Coolidge Corner School of 17 years. I also want to speak briefly about the idea of having an open bargaining format in the negotiations that are now beginning. The BU has proposed this as an idea which is intended to improve the process, to help both parties bring strong principled proposals to the table to facilitate communication and agreement as quickly as possible. Open bargaining is an approach that has been used more and more often throughout the country. I'm learning more about it. It's been used with success. Supporters and advocates for this approach can be found in both the management and labor. It is not intended to disrupt the process or to intimidate parties. There are clear roles and expectations to support it working well. A designated, stable group of negotiators representing the BU, limited in size, will actively engage with the school committee's designated representatives, and then silent observers from our membership. The goal is to facilitate understanding and communication about the process. We will conduct ourselves responsibly. Let's get to work.
Thank you. Kathy Hitchcock.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Hitchcock. I'm a math teacher at Brookline High School. This is my 18th year of teaching. As some of you know, I'm a mid-career person. So, I was in business for 20 years, and now I'm a teacher. I'm also a resident of Brookline Village. I'm a voter in Brookline Village. And I have three children that have gone through the public schools here in Brookline. My youngest is a sophomore at Brookline High. I was here on Monday night as part of the silent team with the negotiators. And I think that when I was reflecting on it, I was thinking, open negotiating might be something new. It might be something new for you. You might not be used to it. So, your natural inclination might be, whoa, I don't know about this. I'm going to be, I'm going to go, I want to go back and do what I know is tried and true, because I think that's generally our inclination. And I would ask you that you learn more about it. And all you can do, what you could do is just easily Google "open bargaining Concord, Mass." You will find a number of articles related to successful open bargaining and contract settlements in Concord, Massachusetts, which is a school system that in some ways is like ours, and in other ways is not. But certainly, it's a highly thought-of school system, just like Brookline is. So, I would ask you to be open, look into it, find out more about it, and go past your natural inclination of, oh, I don't know if I can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the list of people who signed up, but the microphone is open for anyone else who would like to make public comment.
I'm Lizette Lamson. I teach third grade at Heath School, and I love working in Brookline. I couldn't be prouder. And each day I come to work, I feel like the most fortunate person. The families with whom I work, the community, the support I receive from the town in terms of professional development, all of these things, the students that I work with. I can't tell you how much I love them. I am also in support of open bargaining, and would be very happy to know that you gave it your full consideration. There are many people who would gain clarity in the process of negotiation. And I think that as a, as a building rep for Heath, you can trust us that we would be very respectful and just want to learn. We want to ask questions at the right time and be respectful of this important process. So, I, I hope that you'll consider open bargaining with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Horton, and I am the parent of a current ACE senior, as well as the host family to another ACE senior this year. And I would like to ask someone to put copies of these notes that students in ACE would like you to have, speaking to the importance of Cara in their everyday life. And if Cara's presence within ACE is cut down the middle, there are no winners in this group of students. And maybe there are winners in the 100 other kids who she's going to be a guidance counselor for in the high school, but the 55 at-risk students, two of whom are here tonight, and both have very difficult stories. And they're doing really well last year and this year because of ACE, and because of its unique program, and the unique administrators and teachers in that program. So, on behalf of some of the other kids who are writing but couldn't come tonight, they're double-sided. Thanks. And then I'll take that back.
Thank you. If you will, if you'll leave them with us, then Robin can scan them and email them to the whole committee?
Yeah, you can scan them.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for a public comment. Thank you very much for a public comment. Next on our agenda is our fiscal year 2020 budget update.
So I'm gonna ask Ms. Dunn to come up to the podium and walk the committee through everything that needs to happen over the next several weeks relative to the FY20 budget. There are four votes that were in your packet and were discussed at Finance Subcommittee last night. Then Ms. Dunn will walk through what those four votes, four votes are. While, while Ms. Dunn is queuing up the presentation, I want to make clear to the committee that what I am, what Ms. Dunn and I are putting forward, my recommendation to the committee relative to tonight's budget vote, is to vote a budget that is approximately $380,000 in deficit. That it's a difference in, if you remember, the, the original number, the number that we've discussed for a number of weeks was $446,000 gap between what was projected through the override vote and our allocation through this initial phase of the budget process. Through some additional reviews of the budget, Ms. Dunn identified a few areas of additional savings, and so that deficit is reduced to approximately $386,000. My recommendation to vote tonight a deficit budget comes from several years of experience with the GIC vote, the state, the state GIC board. Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff is rightly and appropriately very conservative in her budgeting projections for GIC cost increases and has done so again this year. And based on the proposal put forward for the GIC board for costs to towns in FY20, I believe that, that should that vote proposal go through with the GIC, we will see the savings, enough savings in our overall health care costs to close the gap between the allocation and what I'm recommending for the budget vote, that $386,000. Of course, if that doesn't come to fruition, $386,000 is approximately four positions, so it is significant. But I do believe spending a fair amount of time, not a fair amount, a lot of time reviewing this, reviewing the numbers, and discussing it with Deputy Superintendent Dunn, that it is a, a, a safe proposal. And you will see that in the language and the steps that Ms. Dunn and I are putting forward to the committee for voting, one of them is a clear expectation that that gap, should the vote not come through, is managed by me with recommendations to the school committee on how to close that early on in the process and not wait until late in the fiscal year. So I wanted to give that overview as Ms. Dunn then goes into the specifics of, of tonight's budget votes, as well as other steps of the process.
So Andrew sort of cut, covered all of number one in terms of your motion at this point. And what I'm doing with you is actually having you vote the total budget and then the next round, we, the follow-ups are sort of supplementary to that. And so Andrew has, Andrew has covered the discussion that we're going to present around the operating budget vote. You will also be voting revenue. That is third on the list, and so there's more information I will include in that. But these are sort of two separate votes at this time, and, and we've explained that they are out of balance, and we'll deal with how to deal with the balance in subsequent actions and information. So if the school committee has any other questions, we can take those and, or take a vote.
I was taking notes. When, when do we expect a GIC vote? And I, did I miss, I'm sorry.
I don't know the exact date. I did not mention it because I don't have the exact date, but it's, it is in the spring. It's sometime usually mid to late March.
March, it could be April.
It could be early April. The GIC does work to, to come to that vote relative, as early as they can, because municipal budgets depend on, and municipal planning for the upcoming fiscal years is highly dependent on that vote. So I do believe before the April break, we would have an answer for this, for this gap, and how much of it may or may not be closed, depending on the outcome of the GIC's decision.
So we could theoretically complete the budget, a balanced budget, before the beginning of the school year?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. We would have to. I would, if.
We will, but I was just, I was the inference between.
Yeah, I mean, very directly, if the GIC voted numbers that were, are in line with the town, deputy town administrators' recommendations, I would come to the committee with recommendations for that $386,000 for the committee to, to consider, discuss, provide feedback on, debate, and then vote on before the start of FY20. We will enter FY20 with a balanced budget amount. Things come up during the year. A number of years ago, I think two or three years ago, we entered the fiscal year with a known deficit, and while we managed through it, that's, that's not how we want to continue to operate. So by July 1, there would be a recommendation and, and a vote on how to close that gap so that we, we enter the year with a balanced budget.
I mean, I think there are, there are other potential revenue changes that, that could also affect the number, but I think the two things about the GIC are, it's the one that's likely to become fixed soonest, so it's actually is real, as opposed to going back and forth between the governor's budget and the, you know, because state aid is another big one. And I think we heard preliminary numbers that were lower than what the sixth floor budgets. And so we also believe that there's a potential savings there that just needs to be finalized, but we don't know yet. So that's why specifically we're talking about the GIC more than the other potential contributors.
Is there a typical timeline when that, that piece might get clarified?
The GIC?
No, not the GIC, but any other particular, sorry?
Chapter 70.
Yeah, other aid. State aid, that might.
Anytime between June and November.
Awesome. Okay. That's super helpful. Okay.
And I, and I do believe that this year, given all of the competing and complex bills that are before the legislature, I think it's highly likely that the legislature will not start the fiscal year with a voted budget, which will push it, I think last year it was the end of July when the budget was finally signed by the governor. So I, I think, given the complexities of, of what's being proposed, I, I think that's likely, so it pushes off.
After town meeting.
Yeah. It pushes off.
After our budget gets finalized. Ms. Dickoff and then Mr. Pearlman.
Well, I was just gonna reinforce the notion that it's incredibly frustrating to have to vote a budget legally before we know all of the pieces of our revenue, and yet we have to, right? That's kind of, we have to present a balanced budget at town meeting. And I think the other, just the point about managing this $386,000 in deficit, I mean, it's just worth remembering that it started off as nearly $2 million that the superintendent, deputy superintendent, and all the budget managers have already managed through. And so I, you know, at some point, it becomes very painful. I think you guys have done a terrific job trying to shape things. Probably more things still need to be shaped, and more things need to get reconsidered, even with what's been shaped already. But I do think that there is this, this point of explaining to the public that, yes, we just voted an operating override 18 months ago? How long ago?
10 months ago.
10 months ago? Whatever.
No, I'm sorry. May.
14 months ago. 10, 18, 14. Well, I, I don't know what month we're in.
It was last May.
It was last night? It was last May. It was the last night.
Yeah, nine months ago.
I think we just sort of have to explain to people that, that things change, right? So special education tuition can change without warning, that town refuse fees, which are of little interest to me, change dramatically and then they affect our budget. And to Brookline Place being delayed means that the revenues that the town had expected and promised to us, we don't get. So I mean, there are a lot of things that go into this, and I think it's just important that when we communicate this, the fact that we're voting a $386,000 deficit, that A, it be clear why we have a deficit, B, because we just, you know, that things change, B, that we've already managed through a significant portion of it and sort of how we did that, and, you know, C, if, where, where are places where this 30, $386 might come from? Things to watch over time, and if it doesn't come from that, that, you know, that there are plans. But the reason we don't want to announce those plans is because these are real, you know, we're, we're really hoping to not have to do that. But that all these things are, are in play, and I just think people who are coming in at this point in the process might need just a, a little bit of scaffolding on that.
Historically, have these deficits been subsequently covered completely by the GIC and Chapter 70 funding?
So I would say in the last three years, no. This is a smaller deficit. We've, we have managed, in this budget proposal, have managed to a much smaller amount, the, the gap than in previous years. So I do think that it is a, it's, it's not a guarantee, but I think it's a safe assumption that, that the GIC vote could, could close a significant portion of this, of this gap. And then to Ms. Dickoff's point, we are, we continue to look at ways, as we, as we have continued to refine the budget, to have non-personnel impacts for any, any remainder of the budget. There, there are a few places left for that, because we did start with such a, such a large gap. But, but I, I think that, I am hopeful, I'm cautiously optimistic that a significant portion of this could be closed by that GIC vote.
Oh, yes.
So I have two things. I know when we're speaking of a deficit, it's the wrong time to bring up the new expenses. But I am hoping that there is still a place for composting. I get more email on composting than almost any other topic, but I, I do believe we need to be a leader in this, and that, I hope that, that something can be worked out with DPW and our budget so that those schools that are eager, willing, and able to begin that work around composting will do that in the fall.
Ms. Tarlepsky, I will say in her absence, is taking the lead on working with how, given that all of our refuses is managed by DPW, how that partnership can start.
So I, and then I have another comment if I could. Could you just explain? So I want to say thank you to Mary Ellen and, and to you, Andrew, for, in the budget, listing personnel by, and staff by school. So, so that's really helpful to me, as I know we try to become more aware of what each school's requirements are. And so as I was reading through some of the schools and their concerns and their strengths and objectives and accomplishments, one of the schools was saying that they truly felt that they needed advisories in the middle schools, and that in order to do that, kind of a quick overview, is they may need to hire another person. And then I'm reminded again when we have the presentations around ACE and if they're cutting a counselor by a half a position, the, the flexibility that they have at the school level to determine whether they could in fact, you know, move the money around so that they can meet the needs that they have at their school. So for instance, if at a school they think advisory is really important and that would require an additional staff person, with, and then they might be able to swap that for maybe, they're saying, we've done really well with our literacy coach, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't need two, we only need one. So do they have that ability to move the money around and get the personnel that they feel they have at the school level? Could you talk about that?
Yeah, not in that example that you described. Social-emotional learning is something that we want to have strong and consistent across schools. And Dr. Litaz, along with special education directors, Dr. Bozeman, our curriculum coordinator for wellness, are in the process of developing a proposal to be considered first by subcommittees on social-emotional well-being. And so I would not, I think that it would be a shame for one school because they historically, you know, had a position, or had a position that, that was no longer needed, was able to swap it out and other schools couldn't have that. And there's, specifically with advisory, there's a lot of work happening in looking at how we schedule in our schools, because there, there are some scheduling practices that are highly inefficient and then result in not, and not necessarily the most effective scheduling practices. So if we can resolve that, what sort of capacity, what sort of time is, is released from one thing that can be dedicated to another. Now, with respect to, to position changes, there are, especially within student services, and I can ask Ms. No Miller, sort of a subsequent school committee meeting, to speak to some of the ways that this happens in student services. But as, as needs shift, principals, along with their special education directors, come to Ms. No Miller and say, we would like to propose, you know, these services have shifted, we'd like to propose doing Y next year instead of X, and here's how it would happen. So, so one example of that would be, you know, as, again, as students, individual ed plans shifted and services shifted, the, the staffing of paraprofessionals shifting to staffing for, for teaching positions. And through natural attrition, nobody is laid off, but positions are converted, strengthening the overall service in that school for students. And so that is something that has happened, and that, that example has happened. Or converting a portion of, you know, sort of the, the inclusion facilitator positions that were added at, at a number of schools probably five or, five or six years ago, and sort of reconfiguring those positions internally to, to provide student support, both for students with identified needs and formal education, individualized education plans, and students as an intervention. So that level of flexibility is, is there.
I mean, we've had this conversation previously.
Yes, yeah.
And so I should, again, just this thought that each school knows what their needs are best, and to have some flexibility in, in terms of, of how they allocate their staff and how they meet the needs of their, of their school community, I, I think it's important that they have some autonomy in, in how they handle that.
Yes, is this, do I have this in front of me somewhere?
On the screen.
All right. Ms. Dickoff, as Chair of Finance, if you want to make some remarks.
I move that the school committee vote the 100, the budget, following budget of $120,109,718 for fiscal year 2020.
On the motion, all in favor, please, raise your hand. That is your answer.
Sorry about the formatting of this.
It didn't look like that a minute ago.
It did not look like that, like, two minutes ago, yes, before I plugged into this machine. So I was not going to spend too much time on this slide, other than sort of, in your memo, you already have this as an outline. What I'm asking and what, on behalf of the superintendent, really asking is for the school committee to adopt by formal policy and directive to the superintendent and to all budget managers to actually follow the Ed Reform Act of 1993, the Uniform Massachusetts Accounting System, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Charter of Accounts. So what's been happening, and I've had lots of questions since I began, is in the FY17 budget. I began this process. And finally, in FY20, I've gotten to a point where we, I can begin with some fidelity, show expenditures by building, and then expenditures by department within a building, and then the reverse, which is expenditure by department, and then within that department expenditures by building, including staff. And under Ed Reform passed in 1993, there's been financial reporting that's been required for just that. The previous slide sort of shows you what's been implemented and what's been not. So what's not implemented? So in the Ed Reform Act, what I'm anticipating is in the next five to 10 years, we're going to be getting down to having to report to the DESE expenditures by grade level. We are not reporting yet expenditures by subject or department. We need that for our own information and planning, but that's not currently required by DESE. We, what is required is expenditure by location, which is by building, and by regular education, special education. They're going to bring ELL or ELE back. We used to report on that in the mid-'90s. They're going to be bringing that back for reporting. And we, our charter of accounts is not anywhere close to being anywhere near compliance or even helpful or useful. So, but there are ways around, around that. But it really, it's, right now, we need to change behavior and attitude. and attitude in terms of our budget managers and have them know and understand that there's a reporting structure and that if they're buying books for Baker School, that that should get charged to a Baker School account and that needs to be reported out for Baker School. The principal needs to know from a curriculum standpoint, from the various funds that are controlled by curriculum coordinators, what's allocated to Baker, what's allocated to Lawrence, so that they can be active instructional leaders with those curriculum coordinators about making decisions about how those resources are used and allocated. And right now, we can't do that. And that information really isn't available except within two departments, our art department, visual arts department, and ed tech and library. We need to have that much, to be much broader. So this is to really provide the superintendent and I the directive and the action and the policy for our budget to be in compliance. And this also helps as I need to deal with the town comptroller and the town finance department for system updates and the like, that this is endorsed and a requirement.
I would just like to add to reinforce to what Ms. Dunn just presented, having the vote of the school committee to, as a directive for superintendent and deputy superintendent to be in compliance with this accounting system is important for the work that Mary Ellen needs to do with the town. It also has a benefit, an important benefit of what you just asked, Ms. Fetterspiel, because it allows us over this next budget year to achieve the point of clarity of how all of our supply material, professional development, conference money is being spent by school, which then empowers better decision-making at the school level about how those resources are allocated. So that is why we're asking for this. And I think it is really important that we have the endorsement so that we do, it will require a fair amount of support from the town comptroller's office. And I think that this vote's important to ensure that we have that support as we go forward with this accounting compliance.
So it seems to me you're implying that the comptroller's office is going to have an increased labor burden responding to this? If we change the way we do our reporting, they're going to have to adapt to it in some way that, is it going to, is there a downside? Is there a cost to anyone in doing this? I mean, that's the question, yeah.
There is a cost. Yes, there is a cost. However, the cost is really about a cost of conversion. If we were going to do a massive restructuring, that's a couple of years, that's probably a year or two off with much more discussion. What it is, is it assists me with the comptroller that we can, when we set up accounts and need new accounts, is that we're following a mapped structure that he and I agree on so that we, there is no burden of cost and there's no burden in terms of labor is that our account structure fits in within the existing structure that we've talked, we've had preliminary conversations, he's willing and able to support us in doing that. However, the way the chart is, it does, the town side actually needs a massive overhaul and restructure as well. So there is some partnership opportunity here and we've, Gina Francone and I, as the town finance director, she and I both, because we come from other places and have had much clearer charts of accounts, are, we are in alignment of our need as well as are being deliberate about it.
So what I don't see from this vote is the nuance that you just suggested, which is the vote, why doesn't this vote require you to do that massive restructuring? Because it doesn't seem to have much flexibility and it suggests that all your accounts have to now comply as opposed to just the new ones.
So they all do need to comply? So it's just, what I'm, the goal for this is to message from the leadership of the school department, of which, you know, the school committee being the budget policymaker, that this is a structure and format. So there's, I, in the conversation I've had with many of the budget managers, they don't know and understand that this is actually a requirement. And because it's been a requirement for a number of years, we need to have sort of leadership directive that this is a requirement and this is an expectation and setting that expectation.
So is there a timeline question or anything? I mean, if we tell you everything needs to comply with this, can you do that reasonably and effectively within, with all the other things that need to get done?
Yeah, so it's a multi-year process because you also have to work with your budget administrators to be able to have them work with you and say, here's your account structure, what are your allocation of costs and how do you want to need to allocate your costs, particularly if you're talking about certain instructional expenses? And so there's some conversations that need to happen before you can actually build anything. So it's a multiple-year process. I think it's really the messaging around that there's a requirement and we need to follow that requirement and we are committed to following that requirement and we're committed to whatever time it's going to take, whether that's a snail's pace or faster, we're going to methodically and deliberately work our way through becoming compliant.
I will just add to your question that it will relieve a significant amount of time in the fall when the finance office, the finance office has to report, in the end-of-year report, information this way. And so there's a lot of trying to figure out and sort of, at the end of the fiscal year, a lot of work, many, many weeks of work that the finance office has to do. And so the implementation, there will be some work at both ends, but ultimately we get to a point where by putting this, the alignment of the accounting system and getting it right upfront, it then makes the end-of-year report much simpler. When we want the finance office focused on the opening of school, not on resolving the end-of-year report for the state.
So just on the, I mean, maybe nobody else is bothered by this, but just, so just on the language of the motion, which doesn't have any timeline in it and would seem to suggest that you'll need to make your FY19 end-of-year report compliant. Is that something that you can achieve or are you imagining that it will be partially and then maybe you can do it for FY20?
So currently, right now, the end-of-year report is, once is filed, for 18 is filed, there are, as I look and compare, and so this FY18 is the first one I did. Mike D'Onofrio did them prior from a crosswalk of prior administrations. So as I sat with the auditor and we reviewed, reviewed the details of that report, there are some errors in our crosswalks. So part of it is we need to actually clean that up from a number of different individuals since, you know, 2005 that have done the end-of-year report for Brookline. So the importance of this is the end result of that end-of-year report in terms of data is if we want to compare what we spend for teachers in a certain area with Cambridge, Newton, and our comparative districts, that there's some fidelity that I'm measuring that. So there's data.
Yeah, I'm just asking an operational question for you because I want you to be able to complete your work. Are you confident that you can comply?
I don't have a choice.
When you file the end of this year, will you tell you that your chart of accounts has to comply with this, you're fine with that? That's, you'll get it done.
I have to comply. What I need is for the rest of the organization to comply and be knowledgeable and be willing to be part of the compliance. I can't comply on my own. I need the rest of the organization to know and be directed that they have to expend their funds by building. And when I presented that, I've had resistance because they don't know why.
Mr. Promin. What type of feedback, if any, are you receiving from the town side, from the comptroller, from the treasurer?
They're willing to work with me. They know that there's the same compliance, they understand what the requirements are. So they are willing to work with me and I'm, I've done this, had to do this twice before in two other districts, so I actually know and understand their concerns. And so it's a relatively easier conversation because I can, I share with them where they have concerns from a fiscal accounting structure, system structure. And we have those discussions and we work those out because they appreciate kind of where their concerns are. They know my concerns and understand my concerns. We oftentimes, we are sharing the same concern and we have joint and mutual interest.
With the committees, okay, I was going to move us along but, and ask for a motion.
I was just going to finish answering Mr. Promin's question, which may be worth putting in the minutes. So we've also had this conversation with the advisory committee. There's a group on the advisory committee who focuses on the schools, who we know well, but there's also a group that focuses on the administration of the town. And so we've had this conversation with them as well and with the comptroller and them in the room as well. And so there's sort of a growing conversation that Ms. Dunn has been able to put together, which has been quite productive on that side, I think. The only thing that I would say, just to underscore the chair's point, is I would, I'm not quite sure how to say this, but I expect that to the extent that this is difficult to implement, that we are not creating a false fire drill for our budget managers and throwing things into chaos for a accounting necessity that has not been in compliance for some time, but we are not creating a lot of angst and chaos along the way to hit a false deadline that doesn't end up being important.
Absolutely.
So I think, just to underscore, if this takes a little bit longer, it takes a little bit longer, but I just want to make sure that, you know, this, of course, it needs to get cleaned up, we're all supportive of that, but I don't want it to create chaos. And I think that if we are going so fast that it has unintended roadkill of important ways we function, I think that's important to bring back to us rather than run over the animal.
Absolutely.
Okay. Then I'll move it.
All right. We have a motion. It's a long one, so I won't have you read it on the expenditures or comply with the chart of accounts as noted in the motion. And we have a second from Ms. Monopoly. All in favor? That is unanimous. Onward.
Just to update you, so we will, right now, the Subcommittee for Negotiations is reviewing the non-aligned pay rates and we're having some discussion and revision in that. Once they finish their review, hopefully we'll come to the school committee for review by, for the March 14th meeting. It is my hope that we will be able to get that document to the committee members the week before so that you'll have some opportunity and time to review it way ahead of time. And so if there are individual questions, we can get those answered ahead of the March 14th meeting. And we need the non-aligned pay rates for non-aligned stipends, summer programs, as well as non-aligned 12-month employees. So that's just an update where that is. Now to sort of dive into the revenue, also that non-aligned pay rate impacts sort of what we've assumed and budgeted for non-aligned, we've employees. So the revenue piece, as we've already talked about, is the $386,000. And I'm going to show the next, oops. And I'm going to show two slides ahead. So the way the revenue breaks out is that it's $119,724.028. The town school partnership revenue, that is the amount that appears in the town financial plan of $117,235,691. The materials fee and international student fee, those are our SEVIS students, is a total of $717,000. That is up roughly about 3%. The tuition rate for the materials fee is increasing at a, on a 3% scale. I believe it's, off the top of my head, it will be $2,975 roughly. I believe, or that should be in our budget document. And the SEVIS amount, which I will bring back specifically to the school committee when we talk about fees, is roughly about $21,000 for an international student to have a one-year exchange at high school. And then circuit breaker, we fund, and we estimate that revenue to be the exact amount we received as reimbursement in the current fiscal year. And so we've moved to this model after being very ambitious with collections. And I would anticipate that this is one of the items that Andrew did not mention where we should see an increase primarily because we've had an increase in our tuition budget this year. So we're, the way the circuit breaker works is we claim by July 7th, July 8th of every year, our prior year expenditures for all of our in-district and out-of-district students who are over four times foundation. And so by budgeting the amount we received last year, if our budget's growing, then we can anticipate that we will have increased revenue here. So we'll know pretty early in July, the amount above this amount that we'll receive. So this could be anywhere from...
So is this number, excuse, I'm sorry for interrupting, but this number is the actual FY18 receipts that's been budgeted?
That we received in '19. And so from '19, what we budgeted in '18, what we budgeted in '19 and what we received was $80,000 greater than what we actually budgeted for '19. And that $80,000 helped offset the special ed account when I had to take money out of the tuition reserve to fund the FY18 deficit. If you remember, that $80,000, so it increased $80,000 from last year.
But in terms of, we're going to vote a revenue number today, but in terms of actually understanding a revenue number that will also help with the $386,000, there's no pathway to changing, if we're always just budgeting with the actual receipts from the previous year and that's our practice, we don't have a methodology for changing this according to our practice, right? I mean, if you think this is low because of all of the out-of-district placements that have come up in the last six months and that we've been struggling with, with both this year's and next year's budgets, we know that this will go up, but are you going to change it?
No, because the only pathway to actually change it or even know what it would be will require the staff in the special education department to begin the circuit breaker filing now and start calculating that reimbursement now. And that would be up to that department to be able to do that. And then it's subject to change based on, you know, anything that, you know, errors, omissions, or something like that.
So this is one more leaf in the book that Ms. Dickoff was sort of flipping to Ms. Monopoly about all the frustrations about how we can't pin this down as we do our budget. Riffle book.
This was also a topic of conversation both at the finance Subcommittee as well as with some of the advisory committee members. So that the revenue does not match the expenses and, you know, what is it that we can do on the revenue side, if anything, to close the gap? And so we are already hearing from advisory committee members who are asking questions about increasing some of our revenue sources more aggressively. So our revenue sources being, under our control are things like room rentals, materials fee, BEEP. I mean, they are talking about other things as well. And so at any rate, I just think that we should expect that set of conversations to come back up when we start talking to the advisory committee about the budget deficit. So we talked about BEEP with Vicky Melstein. So at any rate, those are, those conversations are coming as well.
So but in the interest of time, we, you're looking for a motion to vote the budget revenue number, which is the number that's been provided to us from the sixth floor. There's no, this hasn't changed, it's just that number and which is $386,000 out from the budget that we just voted. And there's an, there's italic text in front of us that says the deficit will be the responsibility of the school committee to adjust the category of expenditures, et cetera. So we're not saying we won't close it. There it is, right?
Right. So as Andrew referred to, is that this is kind of the setting the expectation that the superintendent, so there are a couple of issues that impact our budget and impact our deficit. And the primary one that has been impacting '18 and '19 has been the subsidies for athletics, food service, and federal, state, and local grants, which, where the awards are less than they were the prior year. And honestly, there is, we need to change our culture to, that the operating budget will automatically absorb whatever reductions or problems are within each of these categories of spending is that, so part of what you have in your budget document is pre-planning around the grants, and I'll get to that in a minute, and pre-planning around the revolving funds so that we know now what we potentially have exposure to and the superintendent has an opportunity as part of his budget presentation to incorporate that risk within his budget request. And so that's, but we cannot, and we cannot have budget managers assume that the operating budget will have funding to cover over expenditures due to reductions in grants or revenue collections. We need to sort of break that. So that's the working operation that we are under.
So I'm happy to move it. I guess my only question is, when do we, do we feel like June 30th is the right date or do we feel like we want a balanced budget earlier? And what are the implications of that? But I'm happy to move this and we can discuss that if you want.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
And the motion is just the one line?
Right. It was the one line. You just got a further discussion? You just got a further discussion, which I think you were inviting, Ms. Ditko.
No, my only question was, when does the School Committee want, I mean, we didn't get to this, at least I wasn't there.
Oh, I see.
When does the School Committee want to see a balanced budget by? I mean, June 30th, I will just say feels a little late to me, but-
Well, I don't recall ever not presenting a balanced budget to town meeting.
Right.
So, that's when we want to have a balanced budget by, by town meeting. Whatever that means.
But the town meeting, that's, so, but that's, that's essentially the end of April, because we need to send out a document.
There's a lot of logistics that go into what, when that turns out to be, but it needs to be, we need to, we need to send our budget in a balanced form to town meeting.
We, yeah, we didn't talk about this.
I have no concern with that deadline.
Okay. I just wanted feedback from the committee. Yes?
There are two points you actually have to have a balanced budget. One is prior to town meeting, and the other is by June 30th, 2020 of the fiscal year. Like, we cannot end fiscal year, like, we can't have what happened for '18 happen again.
They're both important.
They're both important.
Because it could go out of bounds, even after we voted.
Fair. Yeah? Okay. So, so then our last meeting, then, no later than our last meeting in April, whenever that is?
Last Thursday, yeah. I don't remember the date. It's last Thursday of April.
So just with the, with the understanding that it's the 25th, I guess? That that's when we would vote a balanced budget? We would, we will, we will, if, if it's not reconciled by then, that's when we'll vote it? Okay.
All right. On the motion. All in favor. That also is unanimous.
Um, I'm sorry, that's our direction. This is a request to, so part of the budget memo that you received was highlighting a transfer that has been occurring for, none of us actually know how long, between the Department of Public Health and the School Department with regards to a youth services substance abuse counselor, which is a highly valuable position to the community. And so the Subcommittee discussed having Dr. Jett and Anthony Meyer and Casey No Miller come and talk to us about the history of the partnership, the service and support provided, and reason for the transfer. So one of the, one of the learnings I had over the summer is that the transfer that has been happening through a very sort of, kind of mundane process, actually isn't proper or allowed. So I really need to have School Committee vote to make that transfer. And my way to sort of fix that is that, that if this transfer is going to continue from money from the School Department budget into public health, is that that should be part of your budget vote annually, every year, very, be public, and be kind of routinized in that fashion. But we, in our budget documents, I could not, going back a number of years, probably, I went back probably to 2010, to, I did not see any mention of the position other than a single line item on a spreadsheet in the back of the budget document. There's no sort of real explanation for it. So I think we've had enough turnover in that time period that we should all know the high value of this position and its importance to keep, to keep the position. But is it, is the way we're funding it really appropriate?
So, I'm happy to move it, and just, it's my understanding that this is basically an accounting issue. This is not an interchange in service or anything.
No, no.
It's a change in position, person, service. It's an accounting question.
Well, it's a, it's a, do we all know what we're all funding question?
Okay.
And, and celebrate its value, and then we can fix the accounting piece easier.
And move it with celebration.
Yes.
So, I'm, yes.
Actually, I'm not asking you for a vote, other than to refer to that.
So, so I'm, I'm recalling, but I don't, I'm, I'm going to be fuzzy in my description, but we had a conversation, we've had several conversations in the last four months about, I guess, I guess we had conversations following the, the, the issue of transferring in and out of revolving funds relating to Brooklyn and Adult and Education a while ago, in which Melissa Goff said that the way that the, she runs, prepares her budget document for all the revolving funds, is they're all just kind of listed upfront. And it might not have been the revolving funds, but she says, "For all these kind of dollar amounts and what they are, right near the beginning of their budget, there's like, there's these sort of disclosures, you know? It's like, there's this one, and this is the money that's associated with this one, and they're right upfront, and the town meeting can't get past them if it wants to read the, the chapter and verse." And so I think your option number one, which is the one you've outlined, where we authorize the, the budget transfer, and we just, it's not really a footnote, it's just, or it is, but it's kind of, I think there are other things that this would be next to in being listed, right? Disclosures and stuff?
So there's, I, this is about all that I wanted to cover. Tonight is making sure that we needed, there was enough gap of information, is making sure that we had a proper-
But you're, you're giving us two options. One is disclosure, the other is go talk to Town School Partnership about changing the formula. Option one sounds a lot easier.
Right. But I'm not presenting either of those tonight.
All right. Okay.
On the slide, I'm not presenting either of those tonight, as a result of last night's Finance Subcommittee meeting.
I see. So this is more, this is informative. So, is this a motion or not?
Or a motion.
Okay, this is a referral.
No action is required.
That sounds good. Let's refer it to Finance.
Grants, there's no action required. We will be back to you with more information around our grants as we complete, complete the budget documents for those grants. Again, sort of remain, getting into the point of making sure that we know about any potential deficits that are going to be coming due to the grant awards being less than the current year. So I'm not covering any of that. Revolving funds is the same thing. Very simply, what a revolving fund is, is, I've defined it on the slide, we have a number of fees that need to be voted, or at least reviewed annually, and so those will be coming back to the committee and need to be scheduled, and certainly can be scheduled around March 14th or the end of, end of March meeting as well. There's statutory guidelines that I will pass through these. Most of this information is already in your, in your packet. I'm proposing that probably by April 1st, School Committee should be voting any fees, fines, and charges, those that are changing. In the memorandum, you have the first draft of where those are. The BEEP is going to be proposing a, an increase in their tuition, and we're doing some work to make sure that that is an appropriate increase and is a sustainable one, and whether a three-year, if there's a sort of a three-year plan, we can do with their tuition rates. So there will be more information coming for that.
Right.
The other, and the last item that requires action this evening, is the School Committee's sponsoring of warrant article for school bus transportation revolving fund. And this fund is required to have town meeting appropriation and town meeting action. So the School Committee would be the sponsoring agent. So there, it's essentially, you know, we have fee-based busing for our South Brookline High School students. So the revolving fund would be set up to allow for fee-based busing receipts for any student, for example. So if we expand our service beyond South Brookline, for example, and beyond the high school grade level, we don't need to do anything else with the fund. The, but it's, it's a requirement for the School Committee to sort of make that submittal to the warrant. Let's see if I have that. So the motion would be to see if the town will authorize the following revolving fund limit for certain town departments. This is language. And the $150,000 is significantly higher than sort of what we're actually anticipating spending. However, when you, the way I always set this amount with fee-based busing is, I include the cost, the total cost of an additional bus over what we expect that we're going to spend out of the fund. And the reason for that is if you, all of a sudden, you get a mass influx, and you actually need to add a bus, and you have fees and revenue, if, the way revolving funds work is there's a spending cap on a revolving fund, not a spending minimum. You can obviously only spend the revenue and the receipts that you have, but if you have more, so if we set this at $50,000, and we collected $75,000, and had $75,000 worth of costs, we would have to go back to town meeting to get that cap raised to $75,000. So I have it higher than, so we don't have to go back. There's enough of a buffer. So this would be the motion the School Committee would need to vote to have the selectmen finish and complete their warrant, and then have it show up on town meeting. And so once on, for this town meeting, this, this will have, be sort of front and center and pretty broadly described, and then after this town meeting, it will become a line, just like every other revolving fund, that town meeting appropriates in that article. And there's, and we'll review this spending cap number annually, as when we review the fee for busing annually.
That sounds good. It is moved by Ms. Ditko, and seconded by Mr. Broman. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? You got it.
And just in the interest of time, I'm not going to cover the last item, because it's not, it requires additional, we didn't get to it as part of the Finance Subcommittee, but it's really just planting a concept of a special education stabilization fund. So we can take that up in the interest of time for another time, another day, if that's pleased with the committee.
At, at Finance or School Committee?
Finance or School Committee.
Finance. Please, let's refer that to Finance. Stabilization fund sounds really interesting, but something that should come from the Finance Subcommittee.
Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Donovan.
Yes, thank you.
Delivering a $120 million budget is no easy feat. So thank you to Jeremy, whose last name I don't know.
Stole.
Stole. And all of the budget managers, and everybody else. And Susanna.
All right. Next up, overview of student achievement measures, progress, and interventions. Dr. Gittens and Mr. Amos.
Except for we're going to, we're going to, we're going to replace the A-team and the B-team.
Next up is-
I caught that.
Prefer if you didn't catch it, I don't think I caught it. I'm just going to take a few moments to get this up.
And we're only an hour, and we have nine hours to go.
We do have nine hours to go.
Oh, we do.
Come on, we gotta stop.
I-
Superintendent, I'm sure.
All right, over on draw.
I took, I took the prepared.
Are we going to end?
Are we going to end with me?
We'll still be here until Jersey.
Right. This is a February meeting, not a March meeting. I understand that. That's why I said it.
All right, over on draw, by the way, and asking you if February.
February, you're in hand.
Yes.
The audience is not confident, apparently.
I love it working for Amy Prince midnight.
No, before midnight. I'm not, you know. But our, our agenda is-
Oh, gosh.
Okay, so we're only at 11:30 on your agenda.
11-
We've got half an hour to spare.
11:50, yes. No, 10:50, right. Wait.
25:00.
We'll make it up.
Can I come out in pajamas next time?
Yeah. All right.
I'm kidding.
The chair's only on mic right now.
Awesome.
I'm going to catch up on my segue. Isn't that nice?
I think it's cool that we get it and get mine.
All right. So I want to introduce this presentation and, to the, the committee, and give some context about why this presentation is actually different from the data and accountability presentations that you've received in the past. And I want to say that I actually have a number of folks who are going to join me in the presentation over the course of it. So Dr. Warnham is going to join me in a minute for the, the opening. Dr. Gittens will be presenting, Erin Cooley, as well as two of our principals. Jen Buller, interim, co-interim principal at Coolidge Corner, and Leslie Ryan Miller, principal of Pierce School. I want to frame this in the context of moving us as a, as an organization, and hopefully moving us as a town, from the, from a mindset, from a position of seeing, in many ways, data as a, as a four-letter word, and, and in many respects, fairly seeing it that way, to a place of looking at data as something that's actually really important and valuable to us if we use it the right way. I want to say that, that it, in, in so many respects, the, the reputation that data has received is earned because of all of the ineffective and, and quite frankly, inappropriate ways that data was used, in particular, sort of 2000 to 2010, 2012, where data was used to specifically standardize test scores that were never intended to make individual judgments about students, about educators, or quite frankly, about schools, broader judgments about a school community, were in fact, used for just that. And were used for that in very punitive ways. So again, judgments based on a standardized test score, and sort of all the flaws, not, not actually considering all of the flaws around standardized test scores, and using them to, to make those judgments, to make those decisions. And in so many places, that being sort of the, the one thing that are the most important, most influential data that was used. And we, we, sort of as a, as a nation, came to this notion of data-driven instruction. And I think that's a really dangerous term, because data shouldn't drive what we should do. It should inform the conversations we have. So I'm first asking to make a shift from data-driven instruction to data-informed education. What is it that data is telling us about the questions we need to ask? What information does it provide? And how do we use that data to then think about the connections we have with our students, the strength of our school communities, to make decisions about what should take place, what we should try, what we should try to address in our schools? And so I want to, I want to give two examples, and I'm going to start with the high schools. It's not a part of this presentation, but I want to share that Casey No Miller and I had a chance to meet with Brian Poon and Matt Dubois, a school psychologist at the high school, along with Wendy Ryder, our Special Education Director at BHS. And this year, they have been looking at how to build an early warning system using data to identify students who are at risk of not graduating, not graduating on time, or not graduating at all, based on certain risk factors. And what they did not use at any point in their conversation, in their discussion, in their analysis, was standardized test scores. Didn't come into the equation. They didn't look at eighth grade MCAS scores, seventh grade, et cetera, or, well, they're, they're looking at ninth graders, so they wouldn't look at 10th graders. But standardized test scores never came into the equation. What they've learned, and, and I, it's so powerful, I do want them to come present to the, the full committee, and I would like them first to come to curriculum. So, so a full presentation will, will be coming. But what they learned is that attendance, missing more than four days in a term, is the first, most significant factor for a student in falling off pace to graduate on time or graduate at all. Four absences from a course in a term. The second was course grades. A student that got a D-plus or lower on an IPR, an interim progress report on the end of course grade, one D-plus or lower raised the, sort of, the, the factor. Two D-pluses or lower almost, you know, more than doubled it. So course grades and attendance were the biggest factors. And they did this by analyzing many years of past students, right? It's, they can't analyze the, the, the path to graduation for the current ninth graders, but they analyzed what happened over previous years and made, drew some, drew conclusions. But they also realized it wasn't enough. So they then surveyed students, and they asked students questions like, "Who are you connected to? Are you connected to an adult in the, in the school community? Do you have one adult who is your go-to person? Are you connected with your peers? How are you connected with your peers?" There were a series of questions that they asked. And they, they found that the answers to those questions further amplified the risk of not graduating on time or not graduating at all. And what they found is that, that, that when applying this to the current ninth grade, many of the students that, that were already being discussed, supported, plans in place, had already been identified. Educators knew who these students were, upwards of 75% of the students. They knew who they were. Yet 25% of the students hadn't risen to that level of concern for any number of reasons. So with that information, with the data informing the conversation the educators were having, they then were able to sit down as a team and say, "What about this group of students? What about this group, this 20%? These 12 to 14 students that-" And I think that it is really important that we, we keep that lens and not the lens of it's, it is a fixed judgment. Because what we know is that the, the standardized tests don't do that. They at best give a 30,000-foot view at that one day in time, and it doesn't, it doesn't tell you anything you need to know specifically about a student. And so, tonight, I am not doing the presentation that the school committee is used to over a number of years of the MCAS results and what are the gaps, because they're all the same. And so, we have to stop looking at that information because that's not, to continue to look at it is not going to change our outcomes. Now, we, so, so, so I am tonight shifting that. We're gonna talk specifically about the one common assessment we have in our elementary schools, which is the benchmark assessment, and how we have successfully used that as well as some other information. Again, in this, for tonight, at Coolidge and at Pierce, but Coolidge and Pierce, just please know, are not the only schools that are, are doing this type of, of really good work. So, I just want Dr. Warnham to say a few words, and then I will come back up to the podium. So, you can flip through, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here, as you know, I'm fairly new to the district and really have spent some time getting to know the community and working with teachers and with leaders. And, and really want to call your attention to the slide now, right? And, and we purposely put that system, put that slide there, and I'm gonna read it to you, which is a no-no when doing a presentation, just because it says that we need to be more systemic about how we use data to inform our practice and make decisions about learning programs, practices, and budgets. And for that, if I'm here to be the senior director of educational equity, it is important to know that if we are to become a more equitable district, if that is our goal, we have to have a system where we are always curious about how our students are achieving, feeling connected. So, I want to look at, where do students have the sense of belonging, right? Where do they have their greatest sense of belonging, which takes ownership of their learning? We want to look at things of how many nurses visits, where are students tardy? All of those things should add to our discussion of how do we make our districts more equitable? When we make it systemic, that means there's a regular process for us to always ask these questions, to be curious about how students are achieving and how teachers need support and how we can be helpful. Then, we can design professional, professional development, we could also design practices and figure out where the patterns are to interrupt them. If we don't train ourselves to ask those questions, we will not be a more equitable system. Full stop. I think that we have some fantastic educators in this district, and we will do ourselves a disservice of reaching our full potential if we don't begin to ask these questions, expect to ask the questions, have the discussion, and yield what learning we can gain from those kinds of questions. So, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over back to...
So, we're gonna walk through, I'm gonna go relatively quickly but not inappropriately fast through what our district-wide assessments are and how do we compare to some of our peer districts. And I'm also gonna talk about the benchmark assessment. And then, I'm gonna ask Jen Buller to come up and Leslie Ryan Miller, and then we'll wrap up at the end. So, in terms of assessments, this is what is standard, what we do across all of our schools. So, K through five, we give the benchmark assessment to, to all of our students, kindergarten once, first through fifth grade twice a year. And in kindergarten, we give the kindergarten literacy assessment, again, across our kindergartens, that's in the, in the fall. So, that's sort of the equivalent of the two assessments that, or the two benchmark assessments that happen in one through five. I mean, in middle school, the benchmark assessment is only done with a subset of students. It's done with students who have, have struggled, may qualify for intervention. It is not given to students who have sort of, over a number of years in elementary school, been reading sort of at or above the grade level as, as sort of captured by the, by the benchmark assessment. Those are the only district-wide standard assessments that we give. We have no standard math assessment, and there's a beginning-of-the-year math tool that some, some educators choose to give, some choose not to give. There are some, some common assessments that have been written, say, at the high school for units, but they're not consistently used across departments. So, I just want to be clear that as, sort of, the district expectation, it's the benchmark assessment and the kindergarten literacy assessments. How that compares, so just sort of quickly, Newton has the benchmark assessment, the Gates McGinty reading test, and some common district-wide assessments from the AMC curriculum. And then, you can see in the middle school, some common writing assessments across the middle school, and again, the Gates, the Gates McGinty reading assessment, reading test. Cambridge has Fast Screeners. Fast Screeners, it comes from Fastbridge as the company, and so, it's, it's sort of a, it's a combination of curriculum-based material and computer adaptive assessment, and then a number of, of common assessments across the district that have been developed over time, as you can see in writing and reading, the Cathy Richardson kindergarten assessment, project-based question essays, project-based assessments, pre- and post-assessments, and some common unit assessments, sort of the second bullet from the bottom in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. Wellesley, the benchmark assessment, the DIBELS, and district-developed math benchmarks, and then all grade levels have district-wide common assessments in multiple content areas. Wellesley also uses the DataWise approach for system-wide analysis and intervention, and it's something that came, I believe, originally out of Harvard. I say I believe originally because Harvard hosts the ongoing professional development for DataWise, and it's a, it's a system of using and analyzing data, a wide range of data, to inform, to inform the decisions, making choices, making things that we try in schools. Lexington, again, some, some similarities with the addition of AmesWeb, which is a web-based assessment, and again, a lot of local common assessments. Now, the benchmark assessment, what it is, is it is a process that is used across our schools. I actually have, if you just sort of want to take one and pass it around. So, it's, it is, there are precise books that require specific skills as students are reading them, sort of an analysis of particular reading skills. And teachers meet individually with students, they observe the reading behaviors, they monitor how students are decoding the words, and you can actually see in the photocopied section of your, of the book, the running records, where you're looking for the, the miscues that students may be making, some of the phonological and phonemic awareness challenges, so that you can understand where there may be areas of struggle or something that hadn't been taught yet, or additional supports that a student may need. There are also comprehension questions, and so, you can see towards the end of the, the photocopy packet, there are questions that you ask, that ask for literal in the text interpretation, and some inferencing. I will say that the questions are, are on a pathway to being improved in a, in a revised, more in-depth, in a revised version of the benchmark assessment. I think it's version three, but what you're seeing are the, the comprehension questions from version, version two. And so, it can take, these individual meetings and conferences can be relatively short, it could be 15 minutes, it could be long. The other thing is that there's not sort of a hard end, and so, you can sort of, you know, at a given level, if you have a book that, say, is a Level M, which is end of second grade generally, students might do well with the fiction book but struggle with the nonfiction book. And so, there, there are choices you can make as an educator about the information that you're gathering. The other thing about the benchmark assessment is that the information has historically not been shared with families in Brookline, the specific information, and I think that that is something that we need to correct. I think it's something that we need to change. There's been a fear, or, not a fear, there's been a hesitation to share the information broadly with families because of a fear of a race to the end, a race to Level Z. But I believe that we need to make a shift in how we report on the progress reports and in our conferences to sharing the information, because a student, the, the end-of-second grade is generally a Level M book, sort of M into N, but if a student's not quite there, there may be a very good reason, and there might be nothing that a family needs to worry about. It's about students just continuing to read the books that they like and practicing and enjoying reading, and there's no concern. Or, it could be that a student is struggling with skills that sort of generally are the skills that you want a second grader to be comfortable and, and, and have fluency with, and that requires a conversation of maybe different interventions that the school can provide, and things that could happen outside of school, but certainly with our level of literacy interventionists and the supports in our schools, are certainly things that schools can provide. So, there's a wealth of information that, that, that this provides to our educators and to our families. Now, in the fall, we gave a survey to educators. We asked, in our elementary schools, our K through five teachers, who, I'm sorry, I'm not there yet. Pause on that. You can hold on to what I started there for a minute. These are our outcomes as a district on the benchmark assessment. So, pause and consider, and that's the 37% of students that are reading well above sort of the expected or anticipated grade level. Ms. Dickoff is asked at prior meetings, so why do we assess these students, very fairly, and it's, it's a great question, why do we assess these students twice a year? And in fact, the team of literacy specialists is adjusting their plan going forward based on this information and questions such as that, so thinking about changing the, the when and how frequently students are, the, the time we spend assessing students based on some of these outcomes. If a student's at pause and consider, sort of far above grade level in December, we don't need to do this again in June because they're still gonna be there, right? We need to check in, you know, still check in, but it could be annually and not semi-annually. You can see the blue are students who are still exceeding expectations, and the green are students who are meeting expectations. So, the vast majority of the pie are students who, again, on the, on, in, in these one-on-one conversations, one-on-one meetings with students, with, with teachers, with educators, determining and identifying where students are on this continuum. Again, it's, I can't emphasize enough, I'm gonna, at the risk of repeating myself, on the continuum, because there's no hard and fast rules in reading, it's about how we're moving through that continuum. The vast majority of our kids are where we hope they would be on that continuum. But, we have the yellow and the red of students that are struggling, not quite the yellow, not quite where, where we would hope on that continuum, and the red, students who are far from where we would hope on that continuum. And those are the students that we get, we, we are really concerned about because so much of what we do in education as students move through school is that you read to learn, right? It's that, that sort of classic, first you learn to read and then you read to learn. And so, much of our world is text-dependent, that we are, we do really, we, we are concerned about, and we think really hard about how we intervene and support the students who, who are in those two pieces of the, of this pie, the, in the yellow and the red. Now, what we see is that the, the struggles that we face, it's not quite the same sort of gap that you would see on, on what, what sort of the, the, what you used to see in an MCAS report, yet you see gaps. More of our African-American students are struggling, more of our Latino students are struggling than our Asian students and our white students. That said, on the assessments that we give, there's a significant portion of all of our students who are struggling. And this is something, when you look at, at, again, a standardized test score not designed for this level of, of analysis, you miss that, right? You, you look at the achievement gap, but you miss the students across all race and ethnicities who are struggling. The fact that 19% of our white students are struggling is a problem that we need to solve. The fact that 40% of our black students are struggling is an even more significant problem because there is a, there is a, both, the, the, the percentage is hugely problematic, and why are our African-American students struggling more at a higher rate in reading with all of the great work that our educators do than our white and Asian students? And so, we start asking those questions about why is this happening?
Do we have a sense, I know this is grades one to five, do we have a sense by grades of how that breaks down?
I, I have it, we, we have that, and I can provide it for the committee. I don't know it offhand, but we have broken it down that way, so I'll make sure that the committee gets it. And here is an incredibly stark gap by socioeconomic status. Nearly 50% of our low-income students struggle in reading, and, and nearly 20% of our non-low-income students struggle on that, on that continuum of reading. Even greater for special education students. Now, before I turn over, so that, I think the, the fair question, the question I hope is on everyone's mind is, so what do we do about that? And that's what Principals Buller and Ryan Miller are gonna speak about. So, what happened in schools based on some of that information specifically and other, other data and information available in our schools? Going to what I started a minute ago, in the fall at a faculty meeting, we gave a survey to our educators who use the BAS. We have approximately 275 educators across the district who administer the benchmark assessment system, and 214 people responded to the survey. And what you can see are some percentages here, and I won't go through reading at all, but, you know, from, that, that the benchmark assessment, the question was, how do you currently use the benchmark assessment? So, nearly 90% of educators who answered said they identify students' independent and instructional reading levels. You, so you go down full bullet, four bullets, nearly 70% said observe and quantify student reading behaviors. You go down even further, about 50%, 46.7, the third bullet from the bottom, saying that it confirms the teacher's professional judgment. Part of this is, is sort of that check on your professional judgment, something that we all do, right? We have all of our experience, and we make decisions based on that experience, and about half of our educators use this as a check to make sure that, 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 that they are, you know, that, that they are working with students where they, they believe that they should be. And I think what's really important is that just over 4% of educators answered that benchmark assessment data are not helpful to my practice. So, we had really an overwhelming positive response in how the information is used. Here are some comments from the survey, and what I want to say is that shortly, I will be passing out actually all of the responses. So, I want to, want to recognize for the committee that here I have highlighted five responses, and there's a second slide with some additional responses. But we actually have every single response unedited, and we made sure that there was no identifiable information for students, and so, we'll be passing that information out to you and making it available broadly as a part of the, the school committee record and, and our documents of what our educators are saying, that the 200-plus educators who answered the survey. So, you know, again, I won't read through this, but, you know, I think the, the first bullet is great. Yes, you know, to the question, does, does it provide additional information? Yes, analyzing the benchmark assessment gives me valuable information about how our readers processing information within, beyond, and about the text, which leads to creating goals that will be carried out in guided reading groups. So, again, so, and then, a, a series of questions about, do you have any suggestions for ways to improve it? And again, I'm providing the committee with all of these answers as well. So, you know, you know, from a sort of what I mentioned, something that I believe is important, three bullets from the bottom, an educator, a third through fifth grade educator, said that the district should upload benchmark assessment data directly into the progress reports. Again, providing that information more broadly to families. More information, this is about professional development, information on how we use this, how we use it in a reasonable way. And you'll find a lot of comments about the structure of how we administer the assessment. So, I will, you, you will leave with that information tonight. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask Principal Co... about how our readers processing information within, beyond, and about the text, which leads to creating goals that will be carried out in guided reading groups. So, again, and then a series of questions about, do you have any suggestions for ways to improve it? And again, I'm providing the committee with all of these answers as well. So, you know, from a sort of what I mentioned, something that I believe is important, three bullets from the bottom, an educator, a 3rd through 5th grade educator said that the district should upload benchmark assessment data directly into the progress reports. Again, providing that information more broadly to families. More information, this is about professional development, information on how we use this, how we use it in a reasonable way. And you'll find a lot of comments about the structure of how we administer the assessment. So I will, you will leave with that information tonight. So at this time, I'm going to ask Principal Cointerim Principal Jennifer Buller to come up and talk about ways that this information has been used to actually tackle in a very effective way the gaps that educators were seeing at the Coolidge Corner School. So this is the how, right? This is that question I asked a few minutes ago, sort of rhetorically, so what do we do with this? And first, Principal Buller, and then Principal Ryan Miller, to talk about the how, how schools are using this information to have conversations and make decisions about what to try with students to support students.
So I'm really glad that Andrew showed those slides, and Suzanne, that you had that question about how does it, can you see this for students at the grade level? And that's exactly what our school looked at, is they looked at that pie for our school, and by grade level, thanks to some work that Erin and Ben's office had done and provided to us. And so when we looked at that, we looked at that with our literacy leadership team, which is made up of literacy specialists, classroom teachers, and literacy coaches, and we asked that question, so why is this happening, and what can we do about it? And we focused really on the interventions that students were getting as a result of being below benchmark. And so when a student, when we have our data meetings to think about what we're going to do for the students who aren't meeting the expectation, we have these intervention meetings, and in our past practice was, we are going to put everybody up on the wall, and we're going to group them based on all the kids who are below benchmark, and the lowest kids are going to get LOI, which was just like the one-size-fits-all for our school at that time. And what we were finding was, we had been doing that, and it wasn't helping move our kids enough. And so we decided, well, we have all this really good data from the BAS. Not only can we just see what their instructional levels are, but we can also really drill into the where are they struggling? So are they just struggling with decoding? Are they struggling with comprehension? Is it fluency that they're struggling with, or do they have some global struggles all around? And by doing that, and it wasn't collecting more data, it was just using the data we already had, just at a deeper level, we decided to shift the way we had those data meetings and shift the way we had our intervention meetings. So instead of just saying, okay, this kid is below benchmark, let's have this intervention, we said, well, why are they below benchmark? What is it that they really struggled on in the assessment? And then what we were able to do was look at, so we had, instead of just one category of students struggling, we had students who were struggling with decoding, students who were struggling with fluency, students who were struggling with comprehension, and then students who were struggling overall. And then from there, we could make groups and think about what was the right intervention for them. So LOI was great for certain groups of students, but if it was just that they were struggling really specifically with decoding, could we give them something like a modified Wilson to help boost their decoding skills? Or if it was fluency, could our literacy coach push into the classroom and work with the classroom teacher on embedding more fluency instruction in their guided reading? And so what we did was, in the mid-year BAS, we looked at all of our students that weren't meeting the expectation below benchmark, we categorized them, we matched them to the right intervention. This looked like a couple different things. It looked like LOI, which was just taking kids out of class and giving them a double dose of literacy instruction. It also looked like students who joined a Wilson group that was already happening inside their classrooms. It looked like our literacy coach meeting both with classroom teachers and with our first-grade paraprofessionals, and coaching them on how to run intervention groups in the classroom during like a morning work. So when students are coming and arriving, they have that 20 minutes where they're settling in. Small groups were getting pulled by classroom teachers and paraprofessionals with the guidance of our literacy coach on how to target their specific need. And then it also looked like our coaches meeting with classroom teachers, talking to them about guided reading, and what were the specific things they could target based on the data that they had on that group of students. And so then what we did was, we wanted to say, okay, we're putting in all this effort and work to really drill into the BAS and to try to match students to the right intervention, but is it going to work? And so what we did was, we added a third data collection point to see if what we tried worked. And what we did, instead of having all the classroom teachers do that third data collection point, we didn't BAS all the students, we just focused on the ones that were below benchmark and that were receiving the intervention, and we used our literacy coaches and literacy specialists and special educators, and gave teachers the option, if they wanted to do the benchmark with their own student, they could do that if they wanted to. And what we found was that because our students had these really specific targeted interventions that arose out of really deep examination of the data that we already had, we were able to move and shift students more than we had in the past. And so you can see on this graph, in this table, on the left is the mid-year data collection point, so in the red is all the students who were below benchmark, and the yellow is you're still below benchmark, but you're closer. And then we had students who went from below benchmark all the way to exceeds expectations. So just from when they were BASed in the mid-year and they received that targeted intervention, specific to the area they were struggling on, they were able to not only just make grade-level expectations, but exceed them. And that was for a bunch of our students in the first grade. So these are all of our first-grade students that weren't meeting benchmark, and then where they ended up at the end of the year. So that is a little bit about what we did at Coolidge Corner. And then you can just see here on the side, out of the 11 students who scored does not meet in the mid-year, five of them moved to exceeds, and two of them moved to meeting performance. And then of the five who scored approaches, four of them moved to exceed, and one moved to meet by the end of the year. And so we were, and what we've seen with this group of students who are now in second grade is really exciting, is that as a result of that targeted instruction, the amount of intervention that we've needed for second grade is drastically reduced. We have about four students this spring who needed intervention in literacy, which was pretty exciting to see, and also our special education referrals have gone down in that grade-level cohort as well. So we were pretty excited that we were able to use the data in this way to really meet students right where they are, not add additional data collection, but just use what we had in a more systematic way. So I'm going to turn it over to Leslie, who's going to talk about what they've been doing at Pierce.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having me. This is information that I'm really excited to share. I'm really proud of the work that we've done at Pierce, and I have to give all the thanks to the Pierce faculty that really trusted me in leading this work enough to engage in it in a really meaningful way. So just to elaborate on these points, I'm going to just walk you through my time at Pierce and when I started at Pierce. So when I began in 2017, I started as the interim, and wasn't sure, I knew I would be there for that year, but wasn't sure if I would be there the following year, but also wanted to, in that interim year, lead the school in a meaningful way and make that time meaningful. One of the things that I had done in my work in Boston was really wrote robust school improvement plans with the staff there that would hold us accountable, but also demonstrate areas where we needed to improve, and also note any continuous improvement or lack thereof that we had. And so when I came on as the principal, I was very transparent with the staff that one of the things that was required was for us to write a school improvement plan. I didn't feel comfortable doing that alone with just the school council, as school councils and the principal are responsible for that, but I wanted the plan to be a meaningful one, that whether I was there the following year or someone else came on board, that the faculty would really be invested in and felt like that the goals were meaningful, and was work that they wanted to carry out throughout the year. So I was transparent with the staff that I thought in moving forward, what we needed to do was to write that school improvement plan collaboratively, and that our school improvement plan really needed to be rooted in data, for many reasons, but first and foremost, given that I was new to the school, you know, we needed to make some database decisions, because my thought pattern is that when we make decisions without using data, they're really opinions. And so we really wanted to make sure that the work we were doing addressed any issues that we might be having within the school. So the first thing that we did on the opening day of school was, I engaged the staff in the DataWise process. So in my time at Central Office, I was fortunate enough to take professional development at the Harvard Graduate School of Education and get trained in the DataWise process. And so I shared that process with the staff, which starts with a really simple, kind of leading questions in terms of looking at data, and as you look at them, thinking, what do I notice about this data? What do I wonder about the data? And as we started, I asked the staff, you know, what would be the data that they would most, that they would be most interested in reviewing? And if you know Pierce, I don't think it's a surprise that they were interested in looking at enrollment data. So that's what we started with. On the opening days of school, we looked at the enrollment trends going back to 2000, and it was really interesting, I think, as a community, you know, K to 8 specialists, the entire faculty, to really go through that process of, I notice, I wonder. And so that's how we started becoming familiar with the DataWise process. And then from there on, we used many, many faculty meetings to do two things. One, to become versed in the DataWise process, and as we became versed in the process, we became versed by actually doing. And one thing that I think is really important to talk about is that I believe the process is important, but also, as Andrew stated in his opening remarks, it's not just MCAS data, and it's not just student achievement data that we looked at. We had attendance data that was available to teachers, we looked at even lunch and breakfast data, how many of our students are getting lunches, how frequently, we're looking at, we had the option of looking at our breakfast, how many breakfasts we served. And so part of the DataWise process is building data literacy, and that talks about what is the data that will be most helpful to a faculty. And so the Pierce faculty came up with just a plethora of various data points that they wanted to look at. And so I really wanted to thank Erin Cooley and Ben's office, because they were really helpful. Through my first couple of months, I was constantly coming to them like, can we get this data? Can we get this data? Can it look this way? And they responded in a really timely manner and did get us that data. So what I was hoping in that first year was that we would be able to create goals in both math and literacy. What happened was that it took me more time, or took us more time than I thought to, we started with literacy, and it took us more time than I thought to get through literacy and to really understand the DataWise process. And at one point, I remember Erin and I were meeting, and I said, okay, we're just going to, you know, move on to math because we don't have a lot of time. And she said, slow it down, let's get through literacy, let's get some really meaningful goals, your school is already engaged in this work, and then math will follow. And so we worked, the staff felt that it was very important, after they started looking at some student achievement data, that the needs of the students in the different grade levels was very different. And what they opted to do, instead of making one K to 8 literacy goal, every grade-level team came up with a literacy goal. And they did that, and again, one of the things I'm really proud of is that they did that collaboratively, and I think came up with very strong goals that we're now, in the midst of this year, tracking in our school improvement plan. We have action steps that are linked to that goal, I'm constantly monitoring where we are in terms of those action steps. And I've been really, really pleased, as I've gone through some of the teacher evaluations, when I've been looking at the evidence that they've uploaded, there's such a clear link between what they've uploaded as evidence, the goals that they've set in terms of their evaluation, and also some of the student, the school improvement goals. So it's been just a nice, cohesive body of work that we've all been able to follow up on together, and we've seen, we've already started to see some gains with our students. So we developed the grade-level literacy team goals, and then we are now also looking at various student conduct and behavior goals. One of our school improvement plan goals is around PBIS, Positive Behavior and Intervention Supports, and our focus is having common expectations and monitoring behavior in common areas. So looking at hallways, cafeteria, the cafeteria. This is incredibly important at Pierce because of our enrollment numbers, and so at any time, we might have a large number of students in the cafeteria, and we need, we need it to be a positive place to be in, which means that students need to know what's expected of them, we all need to be on the same page with that. And so we've also began to collect more data around student behavior. And it's been really interesting to look at some of the trends in terms of when we do have areas for improvement with our student behavior, what time of day is that taking place, where is that taking place? So that has been very helpful to see what our next steps are. Just in terms of how this has supported a collaborative culture, one of the things that I was impressed with, just from the start of my time at Pierce, is teachers are always coming together around the table to meet about students. And so I think that this work just lent more structure to that. So again, we used the majority of our faculty meetings last year just to look at data together, and to talk about what's working, what's not, what are the action steps. You know, as a school leader, it's important to me that we use our resources widely, wisely, excuse me, and having this process has really supported that in terms of, we use data, we use our school improvement plan to decide when teachers are able to use workshop hours and engage in professional development over the summer. I was very clear that the work that I wanted to fund needed to be related to the school improvement plan, and teachers responded to that incredibly well. So it just really kind of keeps our eyes on the prize, helps us maintain our priorities, and make sure that our resources are being used in service of those school priorities. I guess one of the other things I just want to say in closing is that it's really important, and one of the things that I'm looking to share with our staff, very shortly, I'll be meeting with grade-level teams just to review action steps and how things are going. And so I think that the use of data really points out, again, our areas for growth, but also even more importantly, shows our areas of growth and achievement, and areas where we really should celebrate as a Pierce community. So it's been a great experience, and it is a learning process, but it's one that has been a real collaborative journey between leadership and the teachers. And I think, in addition, it's really supported our teacher development and teacher growth as something that while we've been doing this in faculty meetings, I've also been seeing teachers do this when they're meeting outside of those faculty meetings, and they're asking for more data, which tells me that this is working for them in their practice.
So while I unintentionally dominated the first half of the presentation, I do want to wrap up and leave a bit of time for the committee to ask questions. Again, Erin Cooley is here, as well as Principals Buller and Ryan Miller, Dr. Gittens, we can all answer questions that the committee may have. I really want to wrap up where I started, which is that this, what you just heard, the actual way that this information is being used about informing the decisions, not driving what we do, but informing the conversations, informing the decisions, informing the choices that we make in support of our students, it's this work that is, in fact, will allow us to make progress on closing the achievement gap. You know, again, where I started was, talking about these gaps on a once-a-year standardized state assessment doesn't do anything to, in fact, change outcomes for students. But when you think about what the first-grade team and the literacy specialists and the coaches and educational leaders at Coolidge Corner did, is that they made substantial progress on closing gaps for students. The 11 students who were there who were struggling to read, and those students were better positioned to have fully access the incredible things that are offered by the second-grade educators, right? So using the information from the benchmark assessment to inform the conversations, applied with what everyone knew about, knew about the students that they had been working with over the course of the year, allowed for really smart decision-making. Similarly, the team at Pierce, you know, just sort of incredible things happening. You know, what Principal Ryan Miller didn't highlight is, sort of when you think about, and You know, what Principal Ryan Miller didn't highlight is, sort of, when you think about, and so I'll just explicitly say it, when you think about Pierce, the hallways are the classrooms and the classrooms are the hallways. And so when you have 892, 873 students moving through the building, sort of, the calmness with which that happens is really important because there's movement all day long. And so as the, as the community of educators have sort of asked the questions like, where are we seeing the most interruptions? Where are we seeing the most difficult transition points? Where do we see classes sort of coming, sort of clashing for, you know, that sort of limited hallway pass-through space? The school has been able to make decisions about how to adjust that. The cafeteria is always full and it is calm. It's loud, right? Because there's a lot of kids. And the building was built in the 70s, so it reverberates. But it's calm. You walk in and even with the volume, there's a sense of calmness. Because students and educators have created that sense of safety through analyzing some of the challenges in the cafeteria and made some significant progress. So a couple of really small examples of how we take all of this information and make choices about individual students, about small groups of students, to in fact impact how students are doing and how students are connecting, achieving, reading, you know, all of it. Building friendships, all the things that are so important to us in our schools. And so this is the way that we use data. We use data to inform the conversations, to inform the decisions that we make. Data doesn't tell us what to do, it just guides us in the questions that we need to ask. So, thank you.
Mr. Proman, you have waited very patiently. You had your hand up about 40 minutes ago.
Just referring back to the very first slide about we need to be more systematic about how we use data to inform our practice. To me, it actually starts a little before that. Because when you are looking at data, there was, at some point was a decision made on what type of data you want to gather. And so there's certain value judgments that are placed in determining what type of data will be gathered. And I appreciate that in the discussion about Pierce. It sounded like teachers are choosing what data should be gathering or what's important to them. I'm wondering if you could go into a little more detail about these grade level collaborative teams?
Sure. So basically, as a faculty, during our faculty meetings, again, we started off as just kind of tackling this as an entire faculty. And very soon after engaging with some of the data, teams started to emerge in terms of, you know, this makes sense for first grade, this may not make sense for third grade. And one of the things that's really important to me is that the work we engage in, teachers don't have any extra time. And so if they're going to engage in professional development, I want it to be the professional development that they feel is really going to move them forward. And so as an offset of reviewing the data, I don't think it's just about where students' areas for growth are and where strengths are. I think it's, also identifies for teachers where they want more professional development or where their strengths are. And so when they got together first, well, in the faculty meetings, we would break into grade level teams. And usually, the first part of the faculty meeting would be me talking about the DataWise process. And then teams of teachers would go off on their own and actually walk through specific pieces of what we call the swoosh. Kind of looks like a, I don't know, like a big curve. And each part of that curve is a different step of the DataWise process. So it gave us a chance to learn about the step and then put it into practice. And that's what got us to the place of creating the grade level team goals. And in terms of data, you know, of course, I started with just a bank of what we had. And very soon after that, teachers were saying, well, I feel like I need this, which could be totally different data, or maybe even just need, had this, wanted the same data but organized in a different way. Maybe by the socioeconomic status of students or by race and ethnicity. And so that's where Erin and Ben's team came into play and they made us a lot of different graphs and a lot of different ways to look at data.
Is the data primarily quantitative and strictly objective? Or is there room for more open responses? Just, how is it formatted?
Sure. So a lot of it was norm referenced, but some of it was more anecdotal data, right? So some of the work that Andrew talked about, in terms of some of the interviewing of students that we did, or as a principal, at times, that came into play. So it was a mix of both. But a lot of it was, especially because we were looking at literacy, was MCAS, BAS assessments. But then when we were looking at the PBIS data, or looking to form the PBIS goal, that was a lot more anecdotal data because we didn't have a bank of data to do that work. But very quickly, staff started talking about, when I'm, you know, in the cafeteria, this is where we're having a lot of issues, or when children come back from recess, things kind of go awry. And so that's where that focus came from. But since then, sorry, if I could just say, since then, I think one of the things that we found out was that we needed a more systematic way to collect that data. And so we actually came up with a referral form. So when there are times that students may need, or teachers might need administrative assistance, we ask teachers just to jot down some information that we keep and can have that helps us know, is there a certain time of day that we're seeing more students, that students need our intervention, or teachers need our support? And so we've started to track that in a much more systematic way for the future.
Barbara, and then Jennifer.
I would like to just thank all of you who have worked on this for what you have presented tonight. Because as we all know, data has gotten an exceedingly bad name in the past 10 or 15 years. People talk about data and you think, all you think about is MCAS testing and that kind of thing. But the truth of the matter is, any good teacher is collecting data all the time. You are collecting data when you are watching your students come in in the morning. What does Mary do when she comes in? She's not with a group of children. Lots of other kids are walking into the room and they have friends with them and they're talking, but Mary isn't. She's by herself. So you begin to watch that over time and see what is driving that kind of separateness. And it may be perfectly fine, but it also may not be because she may be unhappy. And then you, as a teacher, begin to think, what can I do to make her feel better? Now, that's in the social realm, but you do that all the time. When you look at children settling down to do their work, who gets down to work right away? And you watch this over time and you begin to change what you do. This systematic approach to data, however, I think helps people understand what the value of it is. Because you can really begin to say, this is what I'm looking at, this is what I want to do, this is how I'm going to do it. And I'm going to compare it, maybe from year to year, to see how I can change my work to make things more effective. So I do appreciate the fact that not only are we doing this in Brookline, but we are also helping people understand how important data is when you are a teacher.
I also really like the idea of looking at it through a lens of data informed versus data-driven. That makes me very happy, in theory. And so, and I was just wondering, I had two things that I jotted down that I was wondering, I had some wonderings about. And one of them was, where does innovation intersect with this? Specifically in the ability to access professional development, if it's not directly tied to those specific goals for our educators? And then, and there may be many great ways in which educators can work towards those specific SIP goals in achieving and growing as educators that may also be innovative, but there may, you know, there may be this other area where they're interested in innovation not tied to that. So I'm just sort of wondering about the intersection there. And then my other question was about the connection between the SIP goals and the educator goals and sort of like, is that choice or directed choice about how educators get to choose their goals?
So that's choice. So that's easy answer, right? The educator goals are choice in discussion with whoever their evaluator may be, but it is ultimately choice. I'll answer one part of your first question. In terms of innovation, I mean, a small but I think really powerful example is that there's an educator in the system who had done some research and believed that one of the things that was challenging for some first graders in beginning to get access into books, right? Not the literacy, you know, there's all these access points in the play that is such a rich part of all of our kindergarten classes, the dramatic play area, the interactions, the building, the sort of all of that. There's a lot of really important and invaluable literacy access points. But access into books, this educator had a belief that there was, it was a vocabulary gap, it was conversation vocabulary. Not anything tied to decoding or memorizing vocabulary words, but conversation gaps that students may have for any, for a variety of reasons, that was sort of, that was limiting students who otherwise should be sort of comfortably sort of transitioning into exploring books and sitting and, you know, like kindergartners do. They start flipping through it, they'll read some of it, they look at the pictures, they make meaning. And so she, she put together, this educator put together a proposal and started working with kids on just, on conversation, showing kids really cool little videos of a volcano exploding and then having conversations about that with students. And what she then did was, because there's a theory behind this approach, collected data on how are kids, are they, you know, some anecdotal, are kids more comfortable with books? Are they becoming more comfortable picking up a text? And some more, you know, sort of, the, you know, read, like, are students starting to put together the strings of letters, you know, blending phonemes? Like, are they starting to do the things that we think that they should be doing? And in fact, she saw that they were doing it. And so there's an example of an individual educator looking at sort of a problem of students who, for some reason, weren't accessing these books and enjoying it, innovated, had an idea, an innovative idea, and had the freedom to try it, and it was a success. And so that's a very small example, but I think a powerful one. I think if there's others that Jen or Leslie would want to speak to, I'd be happy to. But I think that's, that's sort of the spirit of what we want to do. We want to try things and we want to know it works, right? You know, what, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence that project-based learning is really important and we are working to make more of that happen. When you can, you know, combine your research skills and your scientific learning about the solar system and you're learning about the different elements on planets, you know, then you get to sort of create a, can you, this is from Coolidge Corner School last year, or Upper Devotion last year, that can you create a colony? Can you propose to, you know, sort of venture capitalists, a proposal of what it would take to build a life-sustaining colony on Venus using what you know about the atmosphere and the earth? And there's this combination. You can collect anecdotal information from students, like, are, how are you enjoying this? Are you feeling more connected with one another? And so I think that that helps us know that, you know, sort of confirmed for us as that sort of half of educators on an earlier slide, that it sort of confirms what I believed. Like, and that's, it's good to have that confirmation. You feel you're on the right path and then to know it is really, is invaluable.
On Slide 11, it says, what's new? It says, next school year, we will begin to use the benchmark levels introduced in 2012. We currently use the lower expectations.
Yeah, so we're still using a much, sort of, older sort of continuum. The continuum was updated in 2012 and we haven't transitioned to that. So we're just, we're going to update the continuum that we use. And so there'll be a lot of information about sort of why we're updating it and how. But that's, that is a transition that we're making.
So my concern is that, again, if, if we are very direct about what level, reading level that you should be on, then that can become judgmental. In other words, if we say that a student has to be at Level M at the end of second grade and the student is not at Level M, then that does the same thing as any other standardized test, right? And that now you're judging the child and making some judgments, perhaps start a tracking kind of a thing. I mean, not in elementary as tracking as we know it, but it can happen. And so I'm wondering if there shouldn't instead be a range so that by the end of second grade, you know, we would expect you to be anywhere from, you know, K to O or something, you know, so that there's more of a sense of, you're not failing, you're still in the range and you're not way behind because we all know we learn at different paces. And so I am concerned about the child who will not make M by the end of second grade and it's like failing. And so anyway, I'm concerned about that.
Well, and I think that, in raising that point, you raise the longstanding concern, I think, that has prevented the district, or has sort of held the district back from sharing the information, because it is the race to those benchmarks. And what's going to be really important in a shift is education on what the continuum means. For some students to be, you know, sort of several levels off of that sort of expected, first of all, it is a range. Learning how to read is a continuum. And you might be reading, I mean, you know this, I mean, it's so well, right? That you might be reading one text at an M and you might be reading another type of text at an O or a P or even a Q, right? It depends on, you know, how much nonfiction you've been reading or realistic fiction or, you know, the contents can really, you know, realistic fiction's harder to read than fiction for many students. Nonfiction for many kids is, in some respects, easier and then for many other kids, it's harder, right? It's so individual. So the key is education on the continuum. And the key is through, I mean, we get so much information by sitting with students in the benchmark assessment, we can be really clear. Like, a student can be struggling fluency, right? A student who is dyslexic, for example, may struggle a fair amount with fluency and sort of hitting those milestones, I would say, rather than benchmark, but sort of that milestone on the continuum for, at grade levels. And if the comprehension isn't a concern, and if we're able to say, and we're doing all this to keep working on fluency, then we're, then that's where we want to be. So, you know, I'm not concerned about the student who, I'm not concerned that there's not a plan for or supports in place for the student who is sort of several levels away from that sort of expected milestone, if we can say, well, here's what we're doing to support it. Here's what we know, here's what we're concerned about and planning for, and here's what we're not worried about, right? And I think that that is, there's a lot that has to happen in terms of education of the continuum. It's really complex. And it's something that we have to, we will have to spend, you know, a fair amount of time on and planning so that what we don't get is, if I'm not reading at an M by the end of second grade, then it's somehow a failure because it's not. I mean, it's just unequivocally not. It's about the information that tells us about a student as a reader and, you know, what might we want to do next.
I might also add, in particular in kindergarten, some children just are not developmentally ready to be reading. And so this notion that what used to be a B is now an A, it's, they've made it harder for the levels. And so, again, a notion that, you know, a five-year-old at the end, turning six, at the end of kindergarten should be at a particular benchmark, I think is problematic. And we're much better off saying, what skills does that child have? What are the readiness skills that they can perform or show or what don't they know? What are they comfortable with? Than giving them, again, a benchmark level. So I would just urge us not to go overboard thinking about levels and the end of a grade and in particular kindergarten. Children do not have to be able to read by the end of kindergarten. As we know, Finland doesn't even teach them until they're seven, so we got plenty of time. So it's just things to think about. One other thing I'd like to say, if I could, you know, again, I One other thing I'd like to say, if I could, you know, again, I think I mentioned this before, the Center for Collaborative Education with Dan French has a pilot program going where there are a number of schools and school systems, districts that are, have a waiver from MCAS, and they're looking at alternative assessments, and the state has approved this. So it's just something for us to maybe keep in mind and to think about down the road, about how we might want to approach assessments and show what our kids can do.
Ms. Scotto and then Ms. Dickoff.
I want to just say a couple of things about levels. When Funtis and Pennell first published this book, and these levels were all put out, you heard a lot of children saying, "I need to have a book that is an N level," or "I need to have a book that is a Y level." Or they'd go with their parents to the library, and they'd heard about levels, and they would say, the parent would say, "My child's reading very well. I'd like him to have a book at Level Q or R." And the bottom line is, how many of you pick out your books by how hard or how easy it is? I do a lot of work in children's literature. I read picture books all the time. If people are very strict about these levels, you restrict what the child can read. The child might want to take a book that's more challenging than you as the teacher think they should. But the bottom line is, the kid might be interested in the subject. They might not read it and understand everything completely, but in fact, if they didn't, they'll come back to it. So I think that we need also to be sure that we are not labeling books in such a way that people are restricting what children can choose to read. I don't think, I mean, you can have different things in the classroom where children, in fact, are reading within a guided reading group and so forth. But when that child goes to choose what they want to read, let them choose what they would like to read.
So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for not an MCAS presentation. I know we've been asking for that for a while, so I appreciate it. And I'm very grateful to Dr. Wernham and Ms. Butler and Ryan Miller for your bringing us stories from buildings and from the classrooms where all the magic happens. So thank you for that. It was really helpful to have some tangible examples. And, you know, as many of you have heard me say, I don't, I don't start with the premise that all data is good and more is better. I start with sort of the question of what are we, like, what are we asking? Like, what do we want to know? And sort of what does success look like? And, you know, how do we know it when we see it? And is the juice worth the squeeze, right? It takes a lot of time to get all this data, and so what are we doing with it? And so by extension, I appreciate the superintendent's citing my month-years-long objections to the benchmark assessment system since we first saw the information. And just the question of if 70% are exceeding expectations, what does that mean? What do we do with it? And I hope I wasn't suggesting that we not spend one-on-one time with those students. I hope I was suggesting that it just, this may not be the way to spend that time with them, and that there may be other ways to spend that time, and everyone has something to work on. And so at any rate, I'm grateful that that's where that's headed. And I also appreciate Ms. Fetterfield's point about a range for the scores. I mean, I guess the other question is, you know, where are there places where rubrics are helpful? And I'm personally a fan of student-generated rubrics and structured, well-guided peer review. As young as second grade is when it's done, you know, when it's done well. But I guess my question is that if we kind of talk about multiple measures and multiple ways to assess things, this sort of looked at what's the point of data and where are all the places where data is useful. So I appreciate that. I guess I would sort of start maybe a half a step back, which is, what questions are we trying to answer? Like, what are we curious about? And then what kind of data can help us answer those questions? So if our question is, how do we create the right climate and culture, there's a set of things we can answer. If our question is, you know, are our students engaged learners? Do they have a strong relationship with an adult? Are they strong at decoding? And, you know, the top of the wheel, the bottom of the wheel? Like, there are different ways and different things you would ask, different kinds of data you would collect to answer different questions. And so I guess for me, and that's why I bring up rubrics, like, this is one look at literacy, and there are others as well. And so I guess, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, you know, when we, especially when we look at equity, but just when we look at excellence, I think it's helpful to kind of take that step back of what we're trying to understand, and then show us where data is answering a question and changing a practice, as opposed to, here's all the data, how can it be useful to us? So I think we got here. I got lots of really strong examples of things that data can do to help us. I guess I'm still sort of hungering for that step back of, when we think about a literate child, when we think about a, an equitable classroom, when we think about an equitable district, what are the things, like, how do you know it when you see it? And then what indicators can you look for that would tell you if we're on track or off track? So, and if, and if, again, if 70% of it's great, it doesn't mean don't spend time with them. It just means spend it differently. So I guess that's where I start. I guess I'm wondering if there's a way to have that piece of the conversation.
I think what you describe is what Principal Ryan Miller described the approach at peers. Like, what is our question? You know, what, you know, the enrollment, enrollment is sort of the, I think, a great example of, so we have grown so much. What are we going to know about that? What has changed in our school? And then what are some things that have happened as a result? What more do we want to find out? So I think it's, it, part of it is helping make a shift in comfort and approach. And Ben and Erin, in particular, are working really hard to support our educational leaders in making that shift. You know, we have, all of our educational leaders have been working on it, and we have two great examples tonight with Ms. Buller and Ms. Ryan Miller. Like I said, there are others, and that is part of the ongoing work of Erin and her team, working, of course, closely with Mr. Lomas.
So just to, I'm very grateful for the specific examples, because as you just said, they're very helpful. I guess when I would think about almost a, one suggestion, the next time we talk about this, is that we, we sort of pull back and say, what decision are we trying to inform? Or what are we looking for? Or what does success look like? And then what are the different ways that we can understand that, from observation, from surveys, from, you know, something like the BAS or whatever it is? And then put the data in the context of the question we're trying to answer, and then, and then show us what change does result and how we need to spend money differently or allocate time differently.
I'm with you.
All right.
I wanted to briefly go back to a point that Ms. Scotto raised earlier about how teachers in the classroom are always gathering data. To me, I think there should be a distinction drawn between that type of data gathering, which is more dynamic, it's more personalized, it's more one-on-one, as opposed to some, not all, but some of these assessments, which I worry might end up imposing a one-size-fits-all mentality. Whereas when you have that one-on-one day-to-day in the classroom type of evaluation, it's going to be responsive to individual needs. And ultimately, all of our students, each one's an individual, has his or her own individual needs, and I want to make sure that they get addressed.
And I would say that the example at Coolidge is just, is actually the decisions about individual needs based on the questions that started with the common assessment. And so I think you are right that you, there's a lot of information, and I consider all information data, right? It's just different forms of data. There's a lot of, I mean, people, educators are constantly sort of taking that input in and making decisions in the moment, you know, throughout a half hour of the day. There are countless decisions made based on the information that people are seeing, the data that's happening in the class. And I think that there are ways with, with something like the benchmark assessment to sort of have some commonalities and still ask the really important questions about, so what individually, what do students need? Ms. Buller said it very quickly, but what's so important is, you know, the, doing the leveled literacy intervention for all students just doesn't work, right? We have to make decisions differently. And so some students in that case needed the Wilson Reading Support, and there was a group already happening, so, you know, a student or two were able to join that group. Some students needed leveled literacy intervention. And so you started, you know, you can start making the individual decisions. And so I think that it's a long-winded way, which I shouldn't be long-winded when it's 20 till nine, but a long-winded way of saying that I agree with you, and I think that it's, that it is both feasible and really expected to make those individual decisions, no matter what type of data is coming in, right? No matter what you're using.
So at the intersection of data and progress reports, we, there was a data point about 50% of educators feeling like it matched sort of what they were seeing. And so I, I'm wondering about the other 50%. And my thinking and wondering is, BAS are snapshots, right? One piece of data, just as MCAS is. And so you look for progress over time. And in that vein of thought, I'm thinking about the parent education piece of the continuum of BAS and understanding, I really think we need to really, there needs to be a real understanding of the continuum, and that it's a snapshot, and that teachers may be seeing other pieces. And so why is it 50%? And so like, what is that differential? Are they seeing that that student performed really well? I go to your point about fiction versus nonfiction, that some kids do really well, and they might score higher in one area and not in the other. And so there's this overall picture about reading and lots of different pieces. But I worry about the race to Z, and I worry about the comparison between students and sort of looking at them, looking at it holistically. So I just, there really needs to be a really thoughtful sort of education piece, because it's so complex. And we've been talking about this for a really long time. Educators talk about this all the time with literacy coaches and principals and SIPs, that there's just a lot. There's a lot of information. I think it's going to be difficult to convey. And I just worry about that one snapshot piece saying to being a signal to parents as an indicator of like, pass/fail meets, doesn't meet, when there's just so many. And I don't know the answer, but...
I agree. It will require both careful planning and a lot of, a lot of good work.
Okay, there is. I really do want to end in February, not March, but I, just on that and Mr. Perlman's point, I do think that the, how we, what question we're trying to answer matters, because for the individual child, it actually doesn't matter, right? Like, if they're at, the race to Z is a problem for the individual child. At the same time, it's actually important if we are at a systemic level, we have systemic racism, if we have systemically different outcomes for low-income students. And so I think where I struggle a little bit is putting those two together, because we certainly don't want to say, MCAS is everything, BAS is everything. That's the one way we're going to measure, right? I mean, there are so many ways to think about it. But I actually don't think it's only just the individual, even though I completely agree with Mr. Perlman and Ms. Scotto, that that is enormously valuable information for that child. But when we're trying to think about a system, we actually have to think about those, this comparability. And that's where I think it gets complicated, because people can, I mean, this is where the superintendent started. People confuse one for the other. And so at any rate, I think that's probably a useful information to, you know, inquiry to pursue, which is, as we think about, as a system, fine, nobody wants to use MCAS, you know, let's violently agree on that. What is it? Like, what are we looking at across the system that tells us whether we're on track or off track, specifically around race and income and potentially other things also, but just equity as we, as we think, special education status, as language status as we think about that. So that's where I just feel like we still, I'm still sort of looking for that, that conversation, too.
Thank you. I want to thank, in particular, Erin for staying. Erin stayed to, if any questions came up, and I'm sorry you didn't have any questions, or...
This is an affirmation. This is an affirmation.
So, so thank you.
Probably come up with some.
Erin.
Yeah.
So I'm going to try, I want to propose to the committee, I know that we have building presentations coming up shortly.
(inaudible)
Yes.
I'm reading Ernie Goes Home. We're going to pass it to that.
Oh, wow, we are 2:45?
We were 25, now we're 45.
45, all right, awesome.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Lesley. Thank you, Erin.
(inaudible) vice chair, should I?
Yes, and while the chair is out, I will, oh, do we have, say, your time for 15 minutes?
I think 20.
Okay.
So what's been really important to me for tonight, and part of, sort of all joking aside, part of the reason that Jen goes so late is, it felt very important for me as superintendent to update the committee prior to the end of February on where we are with all of the goals that were put forth. You know, we sort of came in with, I think, nine goals, and we ended up with 14 pages worth of goals. And so we're on track with a lot of them. Some of them were sort of partially there, and we'll get hardly there.
I'm going to turn to this team to share updates on progress towards the goals. And so with that...
Good evening, everybody. Just want to make sure I have the right button. So a review with you where we are thus far with the three goals coming out of the Office for Student Services, the first being the Code of Conduct, previously known as the Discipline Policy. The goal this year was to produce a finalized draft voted by the school committee, and then equally as important, develop an implementation guide so that we have full implementation for next school year. Update there, as you all know, the Code of Conduct was passed by school committee in late January with an effective date of July 1st. I share the excitement with you, Ms. Monopoly. Most recently, actually, at the most recent leadership meeting, I met with all the principals and high school deans to begin the first stages of implementation planning, really asking them, after you've had a chance to look at the final draft of the Code of Conduct, what is it that you need as school leaders, that your VPs need, that your staff need, and having them break it down into different parts time-wise. So from now until the end of the school year, what summer planning do we need to do? And then, of course, what does 1920 need to look like? Excuse me. So that brings us into what we're currently working on. I have some great input from that leadership meeting, but also now looking forward into how this aligns with restorative practice work that's going on district-wide and social-emotional learning curricula planning that's going on. And this is that cross-disciplinary or cross-office work that OSS is doing with Office of Teaching and Learning. Restorative practices, the goal here, as we presented last spring, is that there would be a three-year process to bring restorative practices to all of our schools from pre-K through high school. it that, where are those partnership opportunities and where does education need to occur across the community? And then there have been presentations on restorative practices at each of the superintendent forums. Right now, we're working on coordinating dates for additional trainings before the year is out, but then also identifying what schools will go into, what tiers of training for next year. It is a, it does require two full days and the group can't be more than 25 for it to be a real effective training. And so as you can imagine, there is a lot of time involved. It's time-intensive, but certainly very worth it. The, the benefits coming from the time that you put into the training are immeasurable and are very interconnected with the success of the implementation of the Code of Conduct. And then of course, we're continuing to revise the plan just as we know about, as we learn more about where schools are and what they need.
Is the idea that you're training several individuals within the building and then they, you know, it fans out or you're trying to cycle through 25 at a time?
So both, because we want to get as many folks as we can. Mm-hmm. The third goal coming out of the Office of Student Services is to increase the reading training that we have available at each of our schools. I think I had mentioned to this committee probably last summer, we were developing these goals, that an inventory was done at each of the K-8s to find out what type of reading training special education teachers, speech and language pathologists have had, and it varies. And what I had hoped to do for this year is to change that so that we offer a wider variety and that that variety is the same at each of our schools because we have students with specific learning disabilities, reading challenges across all of our schools, and it looks different and we need to be prepared to address those needs. And so what we've done is met with Landmark regularly over the fall, the special education directors. Joanna Lieberman has also joined us. She is the ELA Coordinator for K-8. For us to assess the need across the district, we have some great data on that and we've started to identify using some proven cases at some of our schools that proven practices and service models. And the next step of that is what type of training do we need with folks? Because the practices and the service models that we've identified involves a little bit of a mindset shift, involves some scheduling changes, potentially revision of service delivery grids on IEPs, 504s. So we have what the things are that we need and the next step is to think about how we go about training folks. Do we put this out at all of the K-8s? Do we have some pilot schools to do this first? Because it also involves not just special educators, but literacy specialists and SLPs, speech and language pathologists. So really thinking through what a long-term plan can be to ensure that everybody, all schools are up to speed with the different training, reading training programs that we need. Any questions?
So thank you for this and I, and I know there's a lot of work to be done, but here's a situation that came up and I'm just wondering how, who will help out with this. At one of our schools, apparently the seventh, the middle school grades have come up with a new demerit system and it's running into some controversy. I think it's new, I don't know that much about it, but it, it may be at odds a little bit with our Code of Conduct, it may be at odds with restorative justice, just in terms of how it looks at students' behaviors and when we think of demerits, we kind of think of punishment, that's typically how you think of that. And it just feels at odds with what we're trying to do with our Code of Conduct and restorative practices. And so, you know, what do we have in place to help a school? I don't know how they got there, but, you know, obviously they're trying to adjust some kind of something that's going on, but I'm not sure they, whether or not they found the right solution based on what our new Code of Conduct says and restore...
Sure, sure. I'm glad you brought up this question, actually. So in terms of how the Runkel School got there, it was actually teacher-created and the teachers over the course of the last year, year and a half, have been collecting information from students who did not feel safe in the classrooms in the school. We actually had a very successful and meaningful conversation at Runkel last night with some families, including principal, the principal, the vice principal, middle school teachers who showed up too, to talk about how this plan, this new system came about. And so it was really teacher-created and teacher-led. They brought forth to the principal this, this plan. And so what the principal did and I was crosswalked what that plan was with the Code of Conduct to ensure that the principals, the guiding principals in the code were followed. And in fact, they are because what happens is it, the, the demerit system is not automatic. The consequences are not automatic. So each student case is still considered individually on a case-by-case basis. So we're, the, the school is still looking at what led to the behavior, how do we teach a different behavior, how do we replace it with something more positive, and what learning needs to happen. So all of that is still happening. I don't know if that was 100% reflected in the communication that went out, which I think is why it's creating such buzz. But to your question, the school is getting support from my office, from the superintendent to, to ensure that what gets implemented is something that is still in line with the code, with the guiding principles of the code. I agree with you that the language such as demerits can sound harsh and we did talk about that last night to, to some parents who agreed. Were, you know, nobody's tied to that word. So it's, I, I hope that gives you a little bit more context into that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an opportunity. Clearly there was a need, they felt a need and certainly that's, should, there should be a discussion, but it's an opportunity to kind of think about our new Code of Conduct and restorative justice and how that can bring some solutions to the challenges that they're having.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I do, I think it's a, I agree, I think it's a really good opportunity to, the spirit of the Code of Conduct and all the work that was put into sort of trying to help and support students and learn from things so that we don't get to, to those levels. And I think that some of that language was missing in the messaging, if that's the intent and that's there. And I, yeah, I have a personal, like, react, emotional reaction to the word demerit and sort of what it, what, there's a lot of connotation and meaning that comes with that word. And so I, I agree, I think it's a really good opportunity to sort of have that restorative justice language and lens put on sort of that whole, clearly wanting to meet the needs of the educators and the students that are there. So I, I hope that, I don't know.
Yeah, I give a lot of credit to the teachers at Runkel who developed this. What I had learned and didn't know last night that the principal shared was that the teachers who, the middle school teachers are giving up their collaborative time on Friday afternoons to work with students who didn't have instances, who were given or will be given demerits over the week, to meet with them and do that processing piece, that restorative work, which I think is just incredible.
Yes, no, I'm sorry, and I, just to add on, I'm, and I, I really want to support those educator, like, I'm very, very supportive of those educators getting what the supports they need and for the students to feel safe and good and comfortable at school. So I think, I'm hopeful that's really just a messaging.
Even as we made the shift, even at school committee, as your guidance, where we shifted from a discipline policy to a Code of Conduct, I think that that's part of what a lot of the community reaction and what you're hearing tonight is, is that as we made that very conscious shift over this last year, it does seem like a, a half step backwards to then say, and now we'll follow that up by having a demerit system. And so, yeah, one of the, you know, being implemented at one of the schools. And so, I mean, I, I don't need to say much more, I think we, we have kind of said it, but messaging makes a big difference.
I just want to, I just add for everyone that I think that over the years, the, the team of educators broadly at Runkel have proven that they are deeply committed to positive supports and intervention. And, and so I would really ask everyone to sort of, sort of both identify the challenge of the language that was used and really trust that they're going to do what is right by the children at Runkel and that, that in fact, what they're developing is, is a system to support sort of the, to be clear, there's been, there have been no suspensions at Runkel this year. I believe there was one last year, but I'm, I, that may not even have been the case. We had so few in our elementary schools. So this, this is something that is, is identified based on conversations with students. And, and so, you know, I think we all agree that there are some, some concerns about the language, in particular the words demerit. And over the years, the team at Runkel, over many years, has just proven that they are so deeply committed to, to students that I think that the conversations are really important. I am so glad that last night, while I was at Baker, Ms. No Miller was able to join at Runkel and, you know, be a part of an important and in-depth conversation. And because what it, what it ultimately does is it makes, it makes the school community stronger, so.
Mr. Dickoff and then Mr. Perlman.
Thank you. So this is something you said sort of triggered something in my mind and while I appreciate the, the dedication of the teachers, I'm a little concerned that collaborative time is being used for restorative practice. So we don't have to do this now because that's not what the point of this presentation is, but I think it would be helpful for us to understand how time is being, how restorative justice and how restorative practices are being used in the climate and culture of the building, how the vice principal's using it, how grade-level teams in, in the classroom, just because I don't, that, that doesn't sound like the right answer either, so I'm just, but I have like this much data, as much as you've just given me. So at, at another point, it would just be helpful when we talk about just the implement, maybe just currently working on, maybe one thing, when you talk about revising a three-year plan, it would just be helpful for us to get some tangible examples of how it's actually working out in the buildings.
Sure, okay.
Beyond the issue of language around the word demerit, it sounds like the genesis of this system being implemented at Runkel is based on, as you said, students feeling unsafe. Can you go into more detail about why they're feeling unsafe? How pervasive of a problem is this? Is this taking place at other schools? How are they dealing with it? Are teachers and other educators similarly feeling unsafe?
So I, I don't have too many specifics. I can tell you that the behaviors that were listed on the letter introducing the system to the families, the middle school families, those are the behaviors that are causing students to feel unsafe. So I think one of, fighting was one of them. We had a couple of parents last night actually say that their, their sons have come home and felt uncomfortable because students were swearing a lot and it made them just uncomfortable and unsafe because they weren't sure if they were going to be targeted next. So that's an example of some of the behaviors ranging from swearing to fighting. There's, I believe it was property destruction. And again, I don't know how much of this is being done when adults aren't necessarily around, you know, if it's not during class time, perhaps it's during recess. So I'm, I'm sure, but I'm happy to have Rebecca Snyder was really the one who spoke a lot, she's the guidance counselor last night about what students are sharing with her in counseling groups, both individually and, and groups.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that update. I think what we're going to do is pause this discussion on goals to move, because we have a lot of guests, to our presentation on schematic design for each of the two elementary school projects.
So yeah, I, can I just, if you would humor me, I just want to sort of give a snapshot of what you will get is an update on the progress of math program review, where we are with implementation, six through eight, and what's coming next for five through eight. This one is so important, something that I've talked about a lot, is how we take things out of the curriculum. And Dr. Gittens, when she shares this, will share with you some prototypes that are being developed that actually create a lot of space in the curriculum, so incredibly excited about that work. And both, you heard a lot about literacy collaborative and then a proposal that Dr. Gittens has is to begin a program review for literacy next year, working with professional development, strategic planning work that's happening, the communications, internal and external, where we are, emergency preparedness, and this is, I think, going to garner a whole lot of conversation, which I look forward to this with the, with the committee. Budget, you've had a lot of budget updates, capital projects, what's happening with multiple school projects, you can see that this is a lot. Where we are so far with the five-year infrastructure plan and what's next. You can see that we're not as far as we had hoped and so there's a lot in the next steps for that five-year capital plan, and that's all the work aside from our, our schools, as well as our work with human resources. I just want to, just again, because I, I'm going to, Dr. Warnham is not used to stay until midnight, so we'll do Dr. Warnham's update on another night. The, just where, where Dr. Warnham isn't in her work from the entry plan to the beginning stages of developing a pipeline for our paraprofessionals of color to achieve licensure. And there are a number of paraprofessionals who are very interested in pursuing this opportunity along with Dr. Warnham and Lisa Richardson. So incredibly, I'm, I'm excited about all of this, I'm incredibly excited about this and just want to highlight that, as well as the plan for training. And Dr. Warnham has started training the leadership team in cultural proficiency. And I would love for Dr. Warnham to do an overview for the committee because it is, it is arguably the best training that I have participated in, in the last decade. And I say that with, with all sincerity and just, from, just, it's amazing. So, so you can see we're developing a plan for this, both for Dr. Warnham to lead it and to train others, train the trainer model. And we're, we are moments away from launching our parent advisory committee for educational equity. And the committee has asked repeatedly if they're open meetings and they will be. So folks who aren't formally identified but applied, Dr. Warnham is inviting everyone and we'll, we'll continue to update. And we're, we're launching affinity groups for Asian-American educators is meeting, I think in the next, yeah, March 21st, next couple of weeks. And so again, I, Dr. Warnham will go in more in-depth at another committee meeting, but given your incredible support for the position as a committee and the, and the voters in funding it, I just wanted to share that snapshot.
So I think to be clear on schedule, we will not take this up again tonight and instead take it up with the time that it deserves at either our March 14th meeting or perhaps our March 19th workshop.
Great, thank you. And we are, we are moments away from launching our parent advisory committee for educational equity. And the committee has asked repeatedly if there are open meetings, and they will be. So folks who aren't formally identified but applied, Dr. Warnham is inviting everyone and will, will continue to update. And we're launching affinity groups for Asian-American educators is meeting, I think in the next, yeah, March 21st, next couple of weeks. And so, again, Dr. Warnham will go in more in depth at another committee meeting, but given your incredible support for the position as a committee and the voters in funding it, I just wanted to share that snapshot.
So, I think, to be clear on schedule, we will not take this up again tonight and instead take it up with the time that it deserves at either our March 14th meeting or perhaps our March 19th workshop.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, are we ready?
Oh, yes. Yes. And to be clear, and I'll, maybe I'll ask Ms. Dickoff as co-chair of the Driscoll Building Committee, but I'm actually asking both building committee chairs, so Ms. Schreiner, Oldham as well. Is there anything that you are asking in terms of actions from school committee tonight or is this just an update?
Seeing as how we're magically back on schedule, that's very exciting. I think there is a moment here where the school committee as, I mean, the technical term is a using agency, which I hate, but like, we are the school committee and these are two school building projects that are in just south of $200 million. I think it's important that we actually look at these schematic designs and that we understand what's in them and we be able to explain them to folks. And my guess is we're not going to get all the way that distant. If people are, have been in all the meetings, this will be review. And if you haven't been in any meetings, this isn't going to be enough. And so, I guess what I would suggest is that we kind of take the temperature of the kinds of questions that people have. The next steps in the process are that on May, March 5th, there's going to be a public hearing at the select board about putting these on the ballot for an override. And then, March 12th, which is a week later, they're going to vote about putting them on ballot for a debt exclusion specifically. And so, I think it's just important that we all take a moment here to at least understand the gestalt of them. And if there are lots of specific questions, like where are the walls and is there a door between the classrooms? Like, I would just suggest in the interest of ending this meeting in February that we not ask those now. But if, but Julie and I can answer them. It's not that Donovan doesn't know the answers. Mr. Levy is quite familiar with where the doors are. I just, we're going to be here all night. So, I guess I would say if we can keep our questions at a, does it seem like this is the right direction for our district? And is there kind of that level of issue without getting down into the, but it's, these are floor plans and it's really important because they drive cost. So, it's just a little bit of self-policing to try to get the right level of questions out. Does that help at all?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Levy.
Thank you, David. Susan and Julie. So, I'm going to start with the Driscoll School. And I'm going to spend about 15 to 20 minutes with a brief presentation to familiarize you with the site plans, with the building plans, with the appearance of the buildings. And we have a, that's perfect. That's perfect.
We're good. We're good.
Good. Okay. And then Philip from my office is going to help us understand the financial context. So, this is the site plan of the Driscoll. This is Washington Street on the bottom, Westborn Terrace here, Beacon Street here. This is the footprint of the new building, formerly known as Option H, the modified STAR scheme. And as you can see, the new building with its three-story, four-story configuration relieves a great deal of open space on the site compared to what was being occupied by what you can see here in the dashed line, the footprint of the existing Driscoll School. So, in terms of the site development, there is a considerable process in the town of Brookline for developing a site between the school department and Parks and Recreation. We have looked at several very preliminary alternatives just to understand how equipment would fit on the site and where the kids might be playing. But among the various alternatives, there will be an extended process, design process. So, we're not showing that right now. Suffice it to say that there's a very large area of open space available for allocation between playfield, hardscape, play equipment, and general community use to the west, if we call this project west to the left and project east to the right. And then in the northeast quadrant, there's a small area which we see as being primarily associated with the pre-kindergarten component of the building. In terms of open space, this is just a reminder that we're relieving about 97,000 square feet of open space, which compares with about 72,500 with the existing configuration of the site. Before I get into the floor plans, I think I showed this to you in the fall, but just as a reminder, this is the basic building block of both the Driscoll and the Baldwin Projects, which is a classroom suite arrangement, twin classrooms that are joined by an openable acoustic wall. In between the two classrooms, there is also a teacher planning or teacher preparation office, which allows the teachers a private space of their own apart from the classroom and also allows for the flexible use of the classroom so the classrooms aren't necessarily assigned to a particular teacher. This teacher preparation office is in a way projected out into the public space of the school so that the teachers can be seen collaborating and also so that the teachers can have a fuller engagement with whatever is happening in the, in the open space of the school. You'll see that the north corridor, north walls, I'm sorry, the exterior walls of these, of the classrooms are devoted to storage primarily. There's a lot of daylight. These are almost 100% daylight schools in terms of the way they're oriented. That came from the very primary decisions about how the buildings would be located on the site. This is the same twin classroom arrangement, but looking in the other direction toward, from the outside to the corridor space. And it just reveals this particular feature that we've developed for these two schools, which is what we're calling a panorama teaching wall, which allows for a continuous uninterrupted teaching surface from the classroom door all the way to the exterior, to the exterior wall. I'm going to start on the first floor plan. So this is still Washington Street at the bottom, Westborn Terrace at the top, the new open playfield on the left. So, first floor level is Washington Street level, maybe just a few steps down, but we're essentially at the Washington Street elevation where there will be a bus drop-off and also some visitor, restricted visitor parking and handicap parking. Here's the front vestibule, which will be a secured vestibule, bank teller-type window monitors the vestibule. Then you're into the Learning Commons cafeteria, as we call it, because it's in the center of the building and is available all day long for learning activities, project-based learning. To the left is the administration suite with all of its different offices, principal's office, conference room. Also, there's room here for the PTO and extended day facilities. And then at the terminating this sequence is the medical suite. To the north, overlooking the broad expanse, green expanse of the, of the new playfields and, and play equipment areas, is the media center with north-facing glass, wall-to-wall and floor-to-ceiling glass, we hope, to, looking to, out to the north. To the right of the plan, we're looking at the kitchen and service end of the building. And then there's a performance suite with music classrooms, three large music classrooms, one very large music classroom with clear story height, and then the multipurpose room with its stage and seating, which can be flexibly arranged. So, now I'm going to take you downstairs, using these stairs here, to the lower basement level. The parking that has been approved for 25 spaces is at this level, access from a ramp that connects to the alley, which connects to, what's the name of it? Bartlett Crescent. And then there's a door with a ramp system down to the level of the gymnasium. This is the main gym and the small gym at the lower level. Here are the stairs that I said we were going to go down. And then, girls' and boys' locker rooms, unisex locker rooms, elevator, storage, and a large, pro-currently undifferentiated mechanical and storage area. The gymnasium and small gym, even though they're mostly below grade, will have clear story lighting, so they will have daylight in them. Now, let's go back upstairs. Now, we're going to take the main monumental stairs up to the second floor level, which has an opening, an atrium-like opening overlooking the Learning Commons. And then this starts to begin the more typical floor plan. And the major feature of this is the centrality of, of really the signature spaces of the building. On this second floor level, the maker space and the fabrication laboratory, which will have extensive glazing, both interior and exterior, access to a maker terrace and a very visible position within the milieu of the public space of the school. To the north, along Westborn Terrace, is the pre-kindergarten wing, you could call it that, with its own vestibule entrance directly from Westborn Terrace and the larger pre-kindergarten-sized classrooms, which will also have access, as I mentioned earlier, to the northeast quadrant of the site with probably its dedicated play equipment for the pre-kindergarten students. Then to the west is a, an array of four kindergarten classes with access to a second-floor terrace, sort of a porch overlooking Washington Street, which we envision as being covered by a trellis, a trellis screen. And then four typical academic classrooms, which in our current understanding probably would be first-grade students. There's also a satellite administration area here with the teachers' workroom and small conference rooms that will help monitor the flow of students during the drop-off and dismissal times of the day from Westborn Terrace. So this is a shallow-sloped ramp and walkway, which is covered coming up from Westborn Terrace into the second-floor lobby. Here, these big Xs indicate the clear story height, the empty height, of the multipurpose room and for acoustic purposes, the large band and chorus rooms. In the green, you can see the variety of different special education spaces. I'm not going to go through all the detail of those, but there's quite a diversity of small conference rooms, of small instructional spaces, and various offices for all the specialized faculty who help serve the special needs students in the school. Let's go up to the third floor level, again, taking now the stairs which zigzag up through the atrium, which you'll be able to see in just a moment. In this central position, there's a project area and monitoring that project area is the teachers' collaborative workspace, which is such an important part of the culture of the Driscoll School, where the teachers love to be together. They have a breakfast every week and we provided a central location for that all to occur. And then here, you can see the distribution of all the typical team-supporting collaboration classrooms with their flexible partitions and shared teacher offices. And the same for the fourth floor plan. These are elevations of the building, which will be predominantly some sort of brick, I imagine. The building has three faces, one face onto Washington Street, which is the main elevation, which you see here. Here is the, the administration suite. Here is the multipurpose room and the major music classroom. And then the typical classroom suites with their projected bays, which create a kind of alcove nook, which speaks to the scale of children and their love of small places that, that sort of branch off from the main space of the classroom. This is the west elevation, fronting onto the park, the garage ramp going down. This is the north elevation on Westborn Terrace with their glaze, these stairwells are glazed so that they become attractive places at the end of corridors. Here are the science classrooms, media, I'm sorry, science classrooms at the top, the art classrooms in the middle, and the maker space and fabrication lab at level two. And this is the pre-kindergarten play area. And then this is the, finally, the face facing to the playfields. Because we live in a community that's very sensitive about the overall urban design of its streetscapes, we were very careful to consider with the committee how the building would fit in to the size and shape of, of the streets that it fronts on. So this, these are street massing diagrams that give you an indication of how the, the height of the building works with the height of what's around it. If you look at the bottom image, this is Washington Street. And here is the profile of the proposed new Driscoll School, which you just saw in colored elevation just a moment ago. And then behind us, I've dashed in the buildings which line the south side of Washington Street, so you can get a sense of how the building, the new building faces the building and the scale and massing of the buildings, which it, which it addresses across the street. Similarly, we've done the same thing here for Westborn Terrace. And here's the height of the building. And of course, those of you who know the site know that Westborn Terrace has a dramatic slope up to the north, that those apartment buildings and, and single-family dwellings are perched upon. So those buildings are considerably taller than the proposed height of the new Driscoll School. And with that, I can give you, if I can find my glasses. Oh, there they are. They're always in the most obvious place. A tour. Let me see if I can do that now. And this is the Driscoll. So here we are approaching the school from the west. Here is the new playfields that I just mentioned earlier. Here's the outline of the existing Driscoll School, which fronts onto Westborn Terrace. Now, we're moving in, this, to the northeast corner with the pre-kindergarten play, play area, the drop-off along Westborn Terrace there on Washington Street, approaching it from Washington Square. And here's the new multipurpose room, the typical classroom projections, bay-type projections, the massing of the buildings on the other side of the street, getting close in now to the main entrance to the building, which we're seeing here. The auditorium on the right or multipurpose room. And now, let's, let's peek inside. Here's the administration suite on the left, going through the vestibule. And now, we're into the main Learning Commons, which is here set up for cafeteria seating. This is a view out to the new playfields. This is the monumental stair that I took you up just a moment ago through the floor plans. Now, we're panning up to look at the light pouring in from the top of the building, levels three and four, and the stairs continue. three and four, and the stairs continuing up to the upper levels of the building. And now, let's go outside, through the Level One vestibule, which is the playfield vestibule, and into the playfield area. You can see how expansive that dramatically long new space will be out to the west. And now, looking, turning around and looking back at the building, looking at the atrium elevation, the Learning Commons elevation, the media center here on the right, the porch terrace, which takes us from the level of Westborn into the Level Two vestibule. Which I think concludes our tour. Now, if I can just get away from the exit. There we go. Okay. And with that, describing the project at hand, I think I can now take you to the metrics. And Philip is going to describe those for you now.
So I will be discussing the cost estimates, in terms of both construction costs and the total project costs. First, before I get into that, I want to just talk about some of the drivers that we see in this area, so that, giving you a little bit of background for the construction costs. There are several cost drivers that aren't in all, or even typical MSBA projects. Buildings we know in the Boston metro area have a higher construction cost, roughly about 20% above less-developed areas in Massachusetts. The project also has structured parking, and, as voted by town meeting, fossil-fuel-free mechanical systems. And, of course, we have the standard Brookline multipurpose room, which adds a little bit of extra square footage that is a little more expensive than normal because it's total height. Just jumping to the chase, we are still within the range that we projected in the feasibility study for total project costs. That's where we're headed. Now, some people will be very familiar with this, and some people less so. So we're going to talk about construction costs, and we're going to talk about total project costs. So the construction cost is really what you think of as the bid. So that has the trade costs, the hazardous materials abatement, the demolition, earthwork, utilities, landscaping, road and sidewalk work, of course, the building itself. And with that are also standard markups, and in the cost estimate that we've developed, these are shown in the summary page. So at this point, in schematic design, we carry a design contingency. That percentage reduces over time as the design develops, so that, at the moment, it's 10%. So if you think of it, we have, a schematic design set is 40 drawings, it's going to end up being 400. As we move from 40 to 100 to 200 to 400, that percentage goes from 10% to 5%, to 2%, to 0%. We also have general conditions, which is the contractor really controlling, orchestrating all of the different subcontractors under the umbrella of the whole project. Bonds and insurance, escalation, that's another one where the percentage reduces over time during design. This is basically knowing that things, costs will increase over the next year as we're doing design, and so that percentage also, as we get closer and closer to the bid date, that percentage will also go from, we currently have it at 6% down to 3%, to 1%, to 0%. And then, a construction manager at risk. We believe we will be engaging a construction manager at risk, and that is built into the cost estimate. The total project costs include the construction costs, of course, which we're currently projecting is 87.2 million, engineering and architectural fees, project manager fees, the construction manager pre-construction fee to help during the design process, legal fees, which are part of every project, commissioning, looking at the third-party, looking at HVAC systems, testing inspections, utilities, furniture fixtures and equipment, technology, moving expenses, hard-cost contingency and soft-cost contingency. And this is very much an MSBA model. So, getting to it, these are the costs that we are currently projecting for the building and the site, the play area, the structured parking, the fossil-free allowance. Some of this is built into our design, some of it we will be choosing from. We are holding a certain amount of fee or project cost, because we do expect that we will want to explore things like geothermal, but those decisions will need to be made as we get further into the design, giving us a total of 108.8 million. How does that compare to the feasibility study? We gave numbers of 84 to 89 million for the construction costs. We're about in the middle there at 87, and the total project costs of 104.5 to 110, and we're at 108.8. This gives you an idea of what's been happening with construction costs lately. This is from the MSBA website, showing their reconciled estimates and seeing what's been happening in '17, '18, '19, '20. So unfortunately, as we all know, we're in a very tight, a very hot, construction market, and we have to anticipate that. How does the school fit in? So these are MSBA middle-school projects. As you see, the number of students, as they get more, the cost of the building gets more. So we're in line with that. How do we fit in terms of cost per square foot? If we had just the base building without the parking and fossil-free, we're sort of right here in the middle of the pack, and when you put that in, we're still at $698 a square foot. We're still under some of these other more expensive projects that are in the metro area. So that's, I can come back to any of that, but I know you may want to talk about the design, so I kind of sped through that.
Yeah, let's open it up to questions from the committee.
I may have mentioned this before, but my concern has to do, in large part, with the Learning Commons. When someone comes walking into that building in the middle of lunch hour, when those tables are all full of kids, it seems to me that's not the most welcoming place for people to come in. It's loud, it's noisy, the kids are up. They're not paying any attention to people who are coming in, not that they should, but I can't imagine, I think about the cafeterias I've walked into, and believe me, there have been many, and when the kids are having lunch, it's not particularly a place that is going to be welcoming, quiet, et cetera.
Who do you imagine will be coming in to the school during the middle of the day?
Any number of people. Andrew might be walking in. It might be somebody who is visiting the school and is meeting someone, or could be somebody in the class. It could be almost anybody.
Barbara, I can only understand your concern. I think schools are for kids primarily, and I think the excitement of having their communal space right in the middle of the school is quite a gift to them. So that's the philosophy behind it. I really enjoy giving you a tour of the Dearborn School, which is based on this model, and see how the kids react to having a place which is really theirs at the center of the school, where everyone comes into that place and enjoys it, and enjoys the fact that their community has a home right there in the middle of the school. But to address that concern, if you think there needs to be more development of the lobby, this is the lobby, and that's also a rather large lobby. I mean, if you compare it to the one, for example, at Coolidge Corner, it's quite large. So we could cordon that off, working together with the district if they felt like they needed a place. There is, I think, a good argument for having a place where parents and teachers and principals and assistant principals can come together in a quiet location with soft seating and so on. So we could certainly develop that into that sort of place.
Well, I remember went to visit a school, it might have been in Marshfield. I can't remember exactly, David. Do you remember where that was? The very first one we visited, Marshfield or Duxbury?
Duxbury.
I don't know. Anyway, there was the same kind of setup, but it was back further, so that you could, it was right in this area where you came in, but it didn't lock off the doorway in that much. There was a passage around it. I don't know. And confronting kids eating and talking, I understand from the kid's point of view, but I just don't, it wouldn't be a welcoming thing.
I think I actually agree with Barbara. Not that I ask you to redo this, but one of my concerns is that the flow of traffic, if you have classes coming down the stairs to get to the music room, or maybe the multipurpose room, they're coming right through the cafeteria, and that really does create a lot of congestion that's going on.
We could certainly, we should certainly alter the furniture arrangement so that there's a clearer aisle.
Yeah, even that would be helpful.
I think the draft person could have done a better job allocating the space.
Take that table out from the bottom tread of the bottom riser of the staircase?
Yeah, yeah.
I also would believe that, yes, there shouldn't be a table right at the bottom of the stairs. I also think that that staircase to the, I don't know if it's east or west, sorry, Jonathan. Nope, down by the music room. I think that'll become the natural staircase for getting to and from the music room.
Some of this has to do with the development of the furniture plant. And some of it has to do with our future development of the cafeterias. I think I've tried to explain that at this early stage, we're at a 15% development of the building, so there will be a moment where we're going to look at every space individually, as if it were a separate project, and we'll look at the pathways and the circulation and the deployment of furniture, and where power outlets are, and so on.
A number of things have changed in the central space since you last brought it to the school committee, including the shape of the cutouts in the upper, in the next floor up.
Yes.
Exactly how the staircase is, right, that's a new shape, how the staircases work. I think, I mean, I worry just a little about acoustic absorption. I know it works well at Dearborn, but it doesn't have as many little kids. Maybe the middle school, high school could be, might be a little quieter in terms of the noise that the kids produce, but so I just think, you know, make sure that you're budgeting for the acoustic treatment, because the undersides of all those floors and everything is going to need to absorb as much sound as possible.
Yes.
I just had a question. I don't, I really don't know anything about Makerspaces or Fab Labs in schools, but it wasn't intuitive to me that I would see them near pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. I guess my instinct is that it's an older-kids kind of thing. Can you talk about the thinking about, around placing it here?
Well, we wanted it in a very prominent place that was near the Learning Commons. We did sort of cordon off the pre-kindergarten by having a glass partition indoors, so there would be a very clear demarcation between the pre-kindergarten and the main space of the building. But keep in mind that, you know, the students are circulating up through these, you know, large stairs to get to their upper-floor classrooms. So it's something that they will be passing and enjoying and looking into and seeing all the activity there. So, yeah, I think the pre-kindergarten issue is significant, and that's why we provided doors and actually kind of sequestered the pre-kindergartners altogether with their own separate entrance from Westborn Terrace.
Just one brief comment. I think one of the driving factors was keeping grade levels together, and so if we didn't do this, you would have had to put pre-K, K1 and 2 all on this floor, which would have been a lot on the floor. You could have done it, I suppose. But I think the other notion was that you didn't only want to, you wanted to cluster them, but not isolate them. So the question was, even on the next floor, there's art rooms, which are going to be used by everybody. So on the top floor, so those art rooms will be used by everybody. On the top floor are science. Science is only middle school, so that's on the top floor with, that's all 6, 7, 8, and that's got science, because that's, and it's got two world language rooms, because those are only middle grades. But in the middle two floors, I think the notion was to say, we didn't only want 6, 7, 8 to be on this top floor the entire day. They go down to art, they go down to cafeteria, they go down to Makerspace, so there's movement, so that the grades still do see each other, to kind of get some of the cross, you know, K to 8 cohesion and relationships that we're looking for. So how do you, like, the notion was to cluster it as much as possible, so it's efficient, but also not isolate it. So anyway, I think that was some of the notion of moving the spaces around.
Also, I remember distinctly about, in the presentation, when we were finishing up and touring Coolidge Corner School, was one of the features of all of the movable furniture and all the movable storage in the large Makerspace at Coolidge Corner School was so that you could move everything to the sides, so that, whereas there's tables enough for two full classes to be in there making things on tables, when you bring kindergartners or first graders in there, you move all the furniture and they just work on the floor. So I think it is all grades.
That's fine. I trust everybody's judgment. I just was curious.
I was just wondering if you could share the building committee's perspective on the main floor space, the cafeteria space being out in the open. And I would also advocate, and I think that naturally there would come a, there needs to be pathways for travel and flow and rearrangement of the tables, I think that we all agree on. But I was just wondering what the building committee's thoughts were. Did they have any concerns? Did they just absolutely love it? Was it a non-issue? I'm just curious.
I think noise was the number-one question, and sort of chaos level was sort of the close second. So I think, as the chair was talking about, sort of noise-canceling technologies, acoustical, I mean, all that is really important to make sure that it doesn't, but that's true wherever it is, just cafeterias are loud, and so, especially in big, open spaces where they then kind of reverberate through, yeah, so multiple people talked about noise. That said, I think there was something that's kind of vibrant about this, especially as you think about other uses of the building. So this, because we had to truncate the presentation, there are other slides which say, what would this building look like? And after school, what would this building look like if there was a community performance? So there was something really nice about putting the, if there was something, there was something really nice about putting the community performance space next to sort of a space where you could have a little reception, if we were trying to rent it out, and really be part of the community. You had classrooms and, anyway, there was just, there was something that was integrated about this, and it also goes with the library, which is, you know, all glassed overlooking the, so it kind of all seemed to work together. I think people seem to think about that. Noise was the number-one question.
I mean, I do like that idea of being able to utilize that space. It really enlarges the space we have for, whether it's reception or science, I mean, you can go a lot of places with this, like a lot of fairs, a cultural fair, international nights, all kinds of stuff. I strongly echo the concern about sound, but I'm sure that somebody has the technology to figure that out, but.
Yeah, and I think arts, equinox, science, solstice, some of the things that are special to the Driscoll community got talked about, and people were excited about the flow that you could have there.
And the only other question I had was the Maker Terrace. Is that restricted to, could it also include, and we don't have to necessarily answer this, but I'm just still wondering about the possibility of incorporating, like, outdoor garden space, and would that be something that would go on, like, on the trellis-screened area, or, and we are, I know that may be way ahead of where we're at, but I'm just wondering if that Makerspace, Terrace space could be dual-purpose, or if it's just specific for those specific kinds of hands-on projects.
Well, I think Makerspace also includes things that have to do with botany and growing things, and so this is a very large area, and we could certainly apportion part of it to things that grow, particularly around, it's most cost-effective to do that around the perimeter, so we can certainly do that, create planter boxes.
Is there, is that, just because I'm not as familiar with the floor plans, access to sunlight there? Like, what, this is the second, this is the second dish board?
That's east. Yeah. It's actually east-southeast. It's east, it's actually east-southeast. So there is good light coming in there in the early morning.
What's above it? That's, what's up on the floor above it? Is there any building above that terrace or no? Is it open?
No, it's open, yeah.
Is, is that terrace accessible without going through? I asked the same thing this morning for our, the Baldwin building. Is there a way to access that terrace without having to cut through another classroom?
No, it's, it's accessed directly from the Makerspace. We try to avoid that because we have to make these blind corridors, these long blind corridors that are kind of frightening spaces. There's no other way to do that.
Yeah, I just had to throw out just a couple of, of observations. One is the, the big landscape stair that's on this, this drawing, which when you come out, when you, when we, when you drove us, you know, through the building and then we came out that door, I'm just wondering if that stair could potentially be grounded on the other side of the exit door. In other words, there's a whole, there's a whole landscape that moves up to Westborne Terrace, and if you come out on this level and then you want to get down to the playground, you, you can go down this, you know, this elevated architectural stair with space underneath it, the way you've got it now, but it's possible it wouldn't take you much longer if you turned right to actually be able to go downstairs that were on dirt. Maybe. And it would less, it would just wouldn't be, it wouldn't be this thing that's sort of up in the air and in the middle of your view as you look out to the playground. So it, and it might cost less to, to, to build a grounded stair over there. So it's, it's really about, and you can see it in the elevation as well, but it, it's something to consider about, as you, as you look at the grading of that whole north side of the entrance, this possibility. The other thing, if you'll go down a flight, is both here, and I'll make the same comment about Baldwin, when I look at the multipurpose room and the stage, as it's set up for, in this case, a concert, you know, a choral concert, or graduation, or music or something, it's great, but I really am curious about whether it provides enough support for musicals and plays and, you know, with wings and offstage and backstage and green room. I mean, here you get green room, the band course room is a great place to kind of slip in and out of, so you have actual green room here that you don't really, that's more of an issue at Baldwin, but still, with all of the glass on Washington Street and it's this, I just, I think that there's a round with Kenny Cozel and with the, you know, and even the high school performing arts people to just think over the long term, for all the different ways that we want to use this amazing school and even community facility, it's very, very open, which is beautiful and wonderful, but, but is that, do everything we needed to do?
And you know during design development, we bring in our theater consultant, who will start a dialogue with, with the district and with your other theater arts folks, and there'll be a long, prolonged.
But it has to do with the glazing on the outside of the building, you know, where your dark, where's, what's, what's light, what's dark. All of that is early, early, you know, kind of so.
The good news is, we just went through this entire conversation with the high school faculty about the high school, about 111 Cypress Street. So there's a new, there's a new performance space there. It's basically a white box. So they have a lot of thoughts about this. It is not their only space, and this is the only space here. So I think we could just ask them to think creatively about how they, how they did that.
That one doesn't, it sort of doesn't, there's other, there's the, there's the main, there's lots of wings and darkness at the main auditorium there. And then the last thing is, I'm just curious.
That can be done very flexibly, by the way, with curtains and so on. I'm also very curious about the need to have a permanent raised stage.
Me, well, that, I think that's a major question about, about how, I mean, the sightlines and everything.
You could have a temporary stage that would allow for a lot more flexible use of that space, for example.
Right. For flat floor, flat floor, I mean, yes, some of our schools have flat floor, some of our schools have raised stage. Lincoln, Lincoln is at one end with a, with fixed seating and a sloping auditorium floor. Pierce is at the other end where it's just like one big room, and the bleachers slide out from the wall, so all of that. And then my last one, question, comment was just about ceiling height in the small gym because the big gym is double, is a whole extra story. That's great for basketball.
More than, more than an extra story.
Right. So that's, that's the issue. The issue is on the small gym, we don't want to pay to push that whole parking level or, or the, I know you ramp down into it, but we don't, you know, you know, yeah, is the small gym have a high enough ceiling? And if not, maybe you just lower the floor in that one room and you ramp down to it, but.
We can, so the way this is conceived.
You don't have to answer it. Just make sure there's plenty of ceiling height in that small gym.
It's minus eighteen, so that, this is more, this is like a story and a half.
Okay. I'm done.
Can I just, can we just go back to the cafeteria one more time? So, so not only is the noise, you're going to take care of that, but just think of the cleanup. When you have peas and carrots rolling around on the floor, you will, you will with those little ones. And so, so they're gonna, so the, the cleaning of the, of a cafeteria space is actually kind of a production. In many places, they fold up the tables, they move them around, they've got the, the wet vac coming in, and so the floor is wet. And I'm just saying, if all that's happening right in the center of the school, it's a bit of a concern.
Suzanne, when we toured, when we were, when before we hired architects and when we toured a lot of high schools and combination middle school, high schools and other facilities around Boston, and a lot of the new ones, again and again and again, we, we went into buildings, I think Winchester was a perfect example, where they totally redone and rebuilt and everything, and you walk in the front door of the high school, right into this space. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, and it's because it gets used from dawn until 10 o'clock at night.
And do they have spilled chocolate milk on the floor? I'm a little concerned about this spilled chocolate.
It was, it's, you know, it's full of students.
No, we don't. That's right. Spilled white milk.
In Winchester, as soon as they're done with food service, whatever time o'clock that is, one, one o'clock, 1:30 or whatever, immediately, for the whole rest of the day, it becomes the commons of the high school, and all the students are there socializing and hanging out and moving between classes and studying.
I mean, I did see the Dearborn, but that actually is down a level. So you're not, as you walk in, you're not walking into the, that learner's, that space.
Yeah, but again.
Well, it's true if you came in from the other side, but the main entrance.
To be thinking about who's walking in.
The main entrance, where the office is, it's, it's down.
The vast majority of people using this school are the kids. But I, I agree with.
Okay, well, just think about it.
I agree, no, no, I think they're all valid points. I just, I agree with David that this has become standard practice to place a cafeteria in the middle of the school. Old schools always had the cafeteria in some Timbuktu place.
And behind doors.
Behind doors, and most of the day it was empty.
It's called a cafeteria, which is one of the most awful words.
The reason for that was twofold. It's very hard to put a cafeteria in the middle of a school because of the service aspect. It's hard to get service into the middle of the school, but there are many, many examples now of centrally located cafeterias that are serving as commons.
All right. Ms. Scotto has the last word.
If you took those tables and moved them over into where the kitchen is based, so that it was still in that central area, but not smack in the middle of it, I think it would be better. Now, I have no idea what you have in the kitchen. That's your problem. It would take it out of, it would take it out of the center, but just a bit, it could still be in part of it.
Yeah, but it's, the program is, the cafeteria is, is buying that space for us because it's a big program area. So if you take the cafeteria out of it, then we don't have.
It fights the growth of the building. It's a big balancing act, yeah, because then you end up with spaces unallocated. Okay, but I, I think there's a lot of work to do around the cafeteria. No doubt.
Good.
No doubt.
All right.
Okay, can we move on to Baldwin? Okay. So the Baldwin is a 450-student school. It's a very different scale than the Driscoll, and in a very different location. So it has qualities and, and an approach to exploiting its site that's, that makes it quite a special kind of school. I, I think the site is an amazing place for a school. It's surrounded by green, and the school with its solar harvesting design is all about the engagement of the inside and the outside. No matter where you go in the school, you're always aware of the landscape and aware of the possibilities of engaging outdoor space. This is a site plan utilizing an old version of the, of the ground floor plan. Here's Heath Street above. It's a very different kind of site plan because the actual buildable area that we're given to work with is what's called the north Baldwin site, but also to the south of it is a 1.2 acre, I believe, Baldwin School Playground, which is a large green space with trees, and to the south of that is the Sewell Recreation Area. We have Oak Street here on the left, also north is to the top. Oak Street on the left here, where we've, the town has completed acquisition of a parcel of land that's very valuable for adding, adding parking spaces, also turnaround space, and a wing of, of program space above it. So the, the main concept here is that the students' parents will arrive, for those who are dropping off, on the garage ramp. They'll drive down the garage ramp. There are two full lanes here. Go under the school where the, the drop-off sequence begins. There's an additional lane which has been added to Oak Street, adjacent to the front door, and that's how the parent drop-off sequence will work. Bus drop-off is along Heath Street. We also think that there's a good possibility that we can share this bus drop-off with pre-kindergarten drop-off, which would occur on the northeast corner of the school. Again, the same classroom arrangement. Now let's start, as we did before, on an upper floor and then go back downstairs. So this is level two. Level two is the entrance floor level. This is Heath Street here. There's a shallow ramp that takes us up to the lobby. This is the actual entrance to the school on this corner of Heath and Oak, because that's how we have to get with railings up to the lobby level. When you enter into the lobby, ahead of you is the pre-kindergarten courtyard, pre-kindergarten kindergarten courtyard. The administration is to the left, medical suite at the end, and there's also a dedicated entrance for the pre-kindergarten wing, which would allow them their own sense of, of place and location. As you move into the building, there are three wings. As you move to the south, towards the, the views out through the clear story of the cafeteria, you're entering into the zone of the multipurpose room and the gymnasium. Multipurpose room will have a full glass wall, looking out over the second floor space of the courtyard. There's a series of small spaces here, offices and locker rooms, gym storage, and then the gymnasium, which is in a wing over top of the parking, which I showed you a moment ago. This is the multipurpose room and the stage. These drawings are not at the same scale as the ones you saw a moment ago for, for Driscoll, so don't be worried about the comparison in terms of size. Now let's go back downstairs. So from the lobby, there'll be a broad monumental stair that will take you down to the first floor level, which is at grade, the first floor level. There's its own courtyard there, which is really the media library courtyard, but it's also shared by the cafeteria, both of which have broad expanses of glass and doors with access to this courtyard, which we conceive at this point is being served by a large amphitheater with steps and risers and a trellis at the top. Here are the music classrooms adjacent to the cafeteria. There's a bunch of service stuff with a loading dock which branches off of that garage service ramp that I mentioned to you earlier. And then let's go back up the stairs to level two. Now, up, continuing up, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, so we looked at level two, which was the entrance level. Now we're going to continue back up those stairs to level three, which is a more typical level, which shows you the arrangement of the classrooms, again, in pairs, and the dispersion of the various special learning spaces. There's some offices here in this wing approaching the clear story height of the gymnasium and overlooking the clear story height of the multipurpose room. At the end of each corridor wing, there's a project area which serves that, that wing. And there are also breakout spaces which enlarge the corridor. All the lockers will be on the north sides of the corridors. You can see the same teacher planning arrangement that we used at the Driscoll School, which serves just as well here. There's a series of special classrooms, health and fitness, ELE, OTPT, and world language along this northwest border of the school. This is kind of Main Street, as we've called it. It has overlooks down, which connect between the floors and up, connecting up to the upper floors. And then finally, on the fourth floor, the general classrooms once again, but here's where the Makerspace and Fab Lab are, having access to an outdoor terrace, which truly would like also access directly from the corridor, if we can make that work. At the north end of that is the art classroom with ideally oriented north glass and its own terrace branching out over the north wing, which is only two stories tall, as opposed to the three-story middle and southern wings. Similar to what we did with the Driscoll School, this is a street massing diagram that compares the various buildings which surround the site with the mass of the new Baldwin School, which is shown here. To the left is a imposing single-family residence on a, on a, on a hillock, and then another single-family, the double-decker here, and then to the right is a multifamily apartment building. And as we did with Driscoll, we've dashed in the buildings which are across the street behind us to give you a sense of how well that two-story massing on Heath Street fits in with the neighborhood. Yes, there are three-story masses as part of the building, but they're way back onto the site, as you'll see in just a moment. So now I can give you a tour of the school using the same program that we used a moment ago. If I can just get there, please. So here we are on the northwest corner at the intersection of Oak and Heath Street. You can see the slow ramp that I mentioned to you earlier, which will also be fully shielded from the weather by a canopy. Here's the wing arching over the newly acquired Oak Street parcel, and the fully accessible passage to the Baldwin North, the Baldwin School Playground to the south. Here's the two-story massing of the north wing of the school, the art terrace, and of course, both the Baldwin and the Driscoll will have photovoltaics covering their roofs one way or another. This is looking up Heath Street to the west. The, it's not shown yet, but the door to the pre-kindergarten wing will be here. This is the overhang of the three two-story project areas which terminate each one of the academic wings. This is the garage ramp which goes down to the garage area. This is looking from. This is looking from the Baldwin School Playground to the south facade, which will be heavily articulated with sunscreen devices, which will both shade the glass during the warm seasons of the year and allow sunlight to penetrate to the interior to help warm the interior during the wintertime. Also, these sunscreens we envision for both projects will be clad with photovoltaics to increase the amount of photovoltaic area that we have to offset the energy needs of the building. And here's the first courtyard and the second courtyard beyond. This is looking at the school from the Baldwin School Playground. This is the two-story cafeteria, learning commons. The science classrooms project boldly towards the view. There's a teacher's lounge or collaboration space here. Here's the gymnasium and the passage to the gymnasium to the west. And then underneath the building is the parking and the access out to Heath Street. Now we are taking a closer look at the front entrance to the building, which is here. There'll be bike storage underneath the passage to the front door. Now we've come in the front door through the vestibule, and what you see ahead of you is the pre-kindergarten kindergarten courtyard, which is at grade and will be have trees and full landscape. These are the kindergarten classrooms off to the left here. Now looking to the south, we can go down those grand stairs, which you can see are very open and permeated with light from all around. This is now down at Level One, looking back up to the balconies overlooking that space. Then going into the media center, which is here to the left with its glazing, south-facing glazing, the amphitheater-like element that I mentioned earlier, and then the double-gleased wall of the cafeteria. Another view of that lower courtyard with its full landscaping, the cafeteria on the left, the media center on the right. And then into the cafeteria and this embracing of the full panorama of the Baldwin School Playground, which is an amazing landscape that the students will benefit from all day long. Well, in this case benefiting from the view of it, but not exclusively. That's right. Well, good. And now, as we did before, I'll let Philip take you through the numbers, if we can get back to that PowerPoint.
Well, as before, the budget for the Baldwin School is within the range that we suggested in the feasibility study. We're a little bit closer to the upper bracket with the Baldwin, but we're still within. The construction cost drivers are similar to what I described before. We have a couple of others. One is that, of course, the Baldwin includes a significant rise program component, and that has by its nature additional square foot per student and an increased staff-to-student ratio. As before, we have structured parking and fossil-fuel-free systems. There's a bit of a premium for smaller schools. Just the nature of a smaller building is that it will have somewhat increased per-square-foot costs compared to a larger school. We do have ledge in the area, which is pretty typical to Brookline, have the multipurpose room. And we're also doing neighborhood improvements. We're doing -- we have included in the budget sidewalk improvements, crossing signals, and that sort of thing to really allow the building to be walkable. I won't go through this slide again. This is what's in construction costs, same with all projects, so fortunately you've been through that. The total project costs, we're projecting the construction cost at 66.9. Then the architectural engineering fees, the fees are roughly in line with the ones that we already described in terms of Driscoll. A small amount of moving expenses and hard cost contingency and soft cost contingency being fairly healthy numbers because we want to just make sure we don't ever have to go back to the well. So breaking that down into the construction costs, basically the building in site, 58.2 million, translating to 72.2 million for the play area in construction costs, structured parking at 2.8. The pedestrian bike safety measures that we have, we have sidewalk upgrades, we have crosswalks, signage, new signals, and a number of improvements to the Route Nine pedestrian crossing to take those existing crossings and make them safer for everyone. That adds up to 1.4 million in construction costs, 1.7 total project costs. The fossil-free allowance, 3.1, bring us to the total of 82.9. So in the feasibility study, we were saying that construction costs were 62.6 to 67. We're just under that at 66.9. Total project cost, 77.6 to 83, and we're still just underneath of that of 82.9. This is the same slide you saw before showing what's been happening. The real takeaway from this is that time is money and that every month that project is delayed, it really adds up to hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars. So how does it fit with 450 students? You see that 83 million compared to a bunch of these other middle school MSBA projects. How does it fit on per-square-foot costs? So if we had just the building and landscape without the parking and fossil-free, we would be $703 a square foot, so still under Boston and Quincy. With the parking and fossil-free, we are above those numbers. But those are bigger schools.
But also, rise with a very different percentage of students for a third of the students.
It does.
We should probably note that on here because I think the number of students is assuming -- I don't know what the other ones are assuming. I assume they don't assume such small numbers.
That's true. And also, pre-K.
A third of the classroom. Actually, that's true.
Yeah, pre-K has a smaller class and a larger classroom.
Right. So anyway, I think that's more than a larger classroom. That's my point. It's like a -- it's almost, it's not quite a third, but whatever that is, sticks out of -- oh, yeah.
Now, this also, just to refresh people's memory, there was a study looking at Baldwin as part of a whole process of how do we add additional seats to the Brookline Public School system. And so this analysis was done by HMFH. And so here, we're saying that we're adding 450 seats at a cost of roughly $180,000 per seat. And you see, it's less than the numbers that were coming from that analysis. So it is expensive, but compared to the other alternatives that were studied, it is still the most cost-effective. And I believe that's it.
All right. Questions?
I guess I have one question, if I may.
Yeah.
It was just a question sort of about whether any decisions or what thoughts have gone into sort of the middle school model at this location as far as, like, none of it was really labeled per grades, and so I'm just wondering what the thoughts were.
Pretty sure it's the next floor up. That's the middle school.
And then that's where the world language classroom is, although not seen in my eyes. Science lab? The science lab upstairs as well?
There are two science classrooms, one's on the third floor and one's on the fourth floor. They're stacked next to one another.
Just an accessibility question. I actually meant to ask it on the other one, and it's partly because I don't normally wear glasses, so I'm struggling because I'm a contact lens wearer, and so, elevators?
Yes, there's an elevator.
I just literally am having trouble. Okay.
On the second floor, I noticed that it appears that the locker rooms are facing Baldwin Playground. I'm just wondering if that's the best location for them, that maybe it could be some other space that could take advantage of being on the open space.
Not a new conversation.
Every other presentation, the locker room changes where it is. He's trying hard to not.
So that's a great question. The idiosyncrasy of this site with the additional land that was purchased is that there's a jog here that takes us up. And it wasn't -- it was difficult to find a way to fit material, program material, in that little jog. So it's possible that we'll continue to study this, maybe reorienting the multipurpose room and putting the lockers to the north. But I certainly am totally sympathetic to what you've just said. But in essence, what we did is we filled this area consistently on every floor with smaller spaces, offices, and the like.
Again, we've had the conversation about understanding, lessons learned from our brand-new Coolidge Corner School and how it's sort of too soon. You know, we need a couple of years in to really know, but I think it would be worth finding out whether the locker rooms are right-sized at Coolidge Corner School and how much use they're getting. Because, for instance, at Driscoll School, the locker rooms were turned into a small gym like 25 years ago, and nobody noticed. I mean, I don't know, you know, they aren't a -- they're in our program well and good, but, you know, what do we, how do we use them? Is there, again, multiplicity of use for them? I mean, for instance, in this case, if they weren't really just locker rooms, they could really provide greenroom support for plays and stuff like that. Is there a way to do that if they're not?
Open space, people gather and talk about it.
Right, a lobby for the gym and, you know, whatever, that multipurpose room activities or whatever. Anyway. Again, it's expanding the -- expanding, making the building less efficient. Other, good point, lockers, yeah.
Well, good. Thank you very much. We're still working away. We have more presentation work to do to really explain both projects to the community as a whole. We look forward to doing that work and appreciate your support. This is very exciting for us to be involved in both of these projects, and they're both terrific locations for schools, and the programs have been great.
And these are, I mean, I will say, I hope on behalf of the whole school committee, these are immensely exciting buildings that you and Andrew and our building committees and all of our district leaders and principals, Susie Toluhtar and Mary Brown, you know, are all collaborating on together, and I am thrilled to be along for the ride. This is really exciting. All right. Deputy Superintendent Dunn, I think you're up on the request for proposals for a food service management company. Yay! Now we get to the really exciting discussions.
Now we can talk about chocolate milk.
Now we can talk about chocolate milk.
Next to composting, I think that food services has been one of the most frequently emailed topics in the Brookline community this year. So we are all immensely excited about the Office of Administration and Finance, who's going to lead us to the promised land on food services, a terrific nutritious program up and running in September.
Thank you for the vote of confidence or the expression of confidence.
Well, it's what everyone expects, so I thought I'd turn it into the positive. I mean, it's not like the weight of the world is on your shoulders or anything. I was trying to be supportive.
Thank you. So before you, on the screen is the current schedule for issuing the RFP. We should have the posting for the director out. Likely it will happen on Monday or Tuesday. So what we are doing is we are posting for a food service director at the same time we are posting an RFP for a bid. I've done this a number of different, a couple of different times, in which case both Matt and I make a number of phone calls to recruit and beg, borrow, or steal from other districts talented staff. We are, we will not be ashamed to say that. The other part is with the food service management company. The other reason why I've done this in the past is to also assist and help and recruit for a management company because they'll be out doing the same thing. So once we make an award, sometimes they have somebody that they will move and because they are, they oftentimes build a bench with their assistant directors, but other times they don't always have a management, a food service director available or one that would like to move. So sometimes you can have a match. So we are still, this timeline obviously is compressed, but we still have, we still meet the requirements to be able to, by the end of April, have an award by the school The language in the, so tonight, what you're doing is you're actually voting to authorize the issuance of a formal request for proposals for contracting a food service management company to perform the duties and responsibilities of the food service director and to operate and manage the public schools of Brookline food service program from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Modifications to the RFP documents, if you have questions or comments regarding the language in the document, there's opportunity to make edits and changes to that well before. So we would make those changes and edits before March 19th. So the process and procurement is we have, the management companies would submit questions and clarifications around the RFP, and we would provide a formal response to that. Usually what happens is part of those formal responses, we would have amendments to the RFP as part of that process. So we have delicately danced around the guarantee because we have a program which we can't have a guarantee. We don't have the ability to have a guarantee because we are where we are financially. And so, but we need to be able to have that as a, to garner their ideas, get some ideas from them. What would they suggest? How would they get to a guarantee? What would they do? And have us evaluate whether we would like to participate in that venture with them or not.
I guarantee, I think you mean break even.
Break even guarantee, sorry.
Break even. Because you could peg it at a loss and then have a guarantee. Get to break even.
Get to a break even guarantee. So I just need the motion to issue the.
Let me have a second from Ms. Cotto. Thank you. Other questions from the committee discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? You got it. You got it. All right. We have one item left on the agenda, which it is my great pleasure to introduce. A contract renewal with Andrew Bott, our superintendent and educational leader of the district. This contract is the same one that we discussed in executive session at our last meeting. And it is before you, and I will make a motion that we approve this contract for the superintendent's contract for the period starting July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2024, a five-year contract, as before you, somewhere before me as well. A second. Oh, thank you. Quick with a copy. Yeah, right. Thank you, Ms. Schreiner-Oldham. Any discussion?
We are very lucky to have you. I hope you sign it.
Especially after, like, a week of Christmas, but now the fourth night of meetings, of evening meetings, so.
Oh, my. All right, well, let's send him home. On the motion, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's excellent. Do we have any new business to come before the school committee tonight? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Until February.